Council is called to order at six oh three P M. I'm going to ask us interim city manager Val Norris to do the invocation. And I'll ask interim city attorney Robert Kim to do the pledge of allegiance today.
Okay, if I can have everyone bow their heads and close our eyes. Heavenly Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to give guidance to the state of Hawthorne. We look forward to having you assist us in making the right decisions as we move forward. Thank you for this time, amen.
Okay, can we all stand and place our right hand over our heart and follow along with me? I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, folks. All right. Mister clerk, can you read the roll call, please?
Yes, uh, councilmember Montero.
What has it?
Councilmember Patterson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Ray English.
Here.
Mayor Protem Valentine.
Here.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes, here.
Councilmembers and mayor are present.
Okay, we do have two presentations and I am going to remind the speakers that they have a ten minute limit. If it's something that originates from the, from the city, our city staff, that ten minutes can easily go past the amount because it's city oriented, directly city oriented business. So, but I am going to remind the speakers to keep it within ten minutes, okay? Item number three is a presentation on domestic violence awareness month. Councilmember Valentine, will you do us the honor of introducing tonight's guest for us?
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, everyone. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. October was first declared as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month in nineteen eighty-nine. Since then, October has been a time to acknowledge domestic violence survivors and be a voice for its victims. Tonight, we have a guest who will discuss the amazing work being done to end domestic violence right here in Hawthorne. Elena Maloney is Executive Director of the New Star Family Justice Center. Good evening, Elena, and welcome.
Actually, I don't even see her on here.
Eric, did she sign on?
Yeah, I don't think she has signed on yet. She's not here.
Why don't we go ahead and do the next one, mayor?
That sounds good.
Then we can come back.
And, okay, yes, and then it's good that you're mentioning that it's Domestic Violence Awareness Month and we'll just keep that in mind as we go through this next month. But ideally, it'd be great if she joins us. Item number four is a presentation on the middle income housing program. Mister Penkower.
Yes, good evening, honorable mayor. Mayor Protem and councilmembers John Penkower with CSCDA. Very pleased to be with you this evening and present this new program from CSCDA. We have a slide presentation that we're going to provide for you. And Darren is going to be showing slides, thank you. Great. So, good evening again. CSCDA, just as a reminder, we are the largest joint powers authority in the state of California. Been around for three decades and created by and sponsored by the League of Cities and CSAC, the Counties Association, and operate a variety of different financing tools for cities and counties from nonprofit finance, various tax credit programs, affordable housing, and infrastructure financing and other programs. We're comprised by most of the cities and counties throughout the state, five hundred and thirty of them, including the city of Hawthorne, which has been a member for approximately two decades. And to date, we've issued more than sixty-five billion dollars in bonds, making CSCDA one of the largest municipal issuers in the nation. Next slide, please. So I mentioned affordable housing. Within the affordable housing space, CSCDA is one of the larger issuers of tax exempt bonds for traditional low and very low income projects throughout the state. Hundred thousand units to date have been financed through this program and they typically utilize tax credits, bond financing, and other funding from both the state and local, other local jurisdictions. These projects are typically limited to those earning less than sixty percent of the area median income. So what happens is when we get above sixty percent of AMI, we lose all of those resources. We don't have access to tax credits or money from HCD. And that's what's led to this term that I'm sure you're familiar with, the missing middle, that's being talked about more and more. These are individuals that earn more than sixty percent of AMI. So they don't qualify for traditional tax credit housing projects, but they don't necessarily earn enough to live in a lot of the communities where they're currently working. First responders, city and county employees, teachers, healthcare workers. And so this innovative tool that we're going to be talking about today is, was created to address this middle income demographic. So the way that we solve for that is through CSCDA's workforce housing program. And under this program, CSCDA can acquire new or existing properties, finance them with governmental bonds, and it doesn't require these additional subsidies or equity or other funds from cities, counties, or the state. CSCDA will own the property and trust for the city and allow all of the future financial benefits in that project to accrue back to the city. That's done through one document, what we call the Public Benefit Agreement, and that's what affords the city all of the disposition rights with the asset. And then, most importantly, all of the accrued equity, all of the future sales proceeds would go back to the city. This slide here shows you a number of your peer cities that have been participating in the program. It's been growing pretty rapidly over the last year. You'll see five additional cities within L.A. County. Four additional projects are closing this month. And the program will have north of five thousand units included here by November of this year. Next slide. These are just a couple of components about the program. There's rent, rent increase protection under the program, which at four percent, which is considerably lower than the new state rent control law. There's no tenants that are ever displaced under the program. Often tenants will already qualify. It just means that they're already spending perhaps fifty percent or more of their income on rent. So this program allows them to pay a fairer rent and enable them to have more disposable income, savings for first home, healthcare needs, education costs, et cetera. It doesn't require Section Eight or HUD vouchers to make the program work. And by converting units and existing assets, it enables more market rate development, which is candidly much easier than developing low and middle income housing projects. Next slide. I mentioned the Public Benefit Agreement. I'm going to go through this briefly in the interest of time. Under this agreement, the city never has to own the asset, which is important. Most of your peers don't want to actually be the owner or landlord. There's no equity partners. There's no shareholders or other partners that receive any of the future value in the asset. But all of that equity will go back to the city. Most importantly, the city is not assuming any liability, administrative responsibilities. And lastly, I mentioned that there's no equity shareholders or partners in the project. And so all of the cash flow from the project, from rent, can only go back into the project or to pay down the bond principal, which will ultimately flow back to the city in accrued equity. Next slide. So these next two slides just show a snapshot of some of the existing projects. This shows Ocean Air Apartments in Long Beach was acquired in May. So you'll see some of the tenants that have been moving in, eligible tenants. You'll see, again, first responders, you'll see sheriff's office, teachers. You can see their income there and they're now able to move into a Class A apartment building right downtown in the community where they're currently working. This is Anaheim. This is two projects, two hundred and fifty leases were converted just since March, and you'll see that very similar demographic of missing middle residents. And I believe this is the last slide and then I'm going to turn it over to Darren. The city's already a member of CSCDA. It's a pretty easy process. It just requires one resolution, opting into the program and agreeing to receive that future value in the asset. Again, no costs, no liabilities or responsibilities. And I'm going to turn it over to Darren and talk a little bit about a project actually within Hawthorne.
Sorry, I needed to unmute myself. Good evening, council. Can you still see my screen, okay?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I'm gonna jump ahead back to where we were, sorry about that. So for, I won't take too much more of your time, but first we want to thank Mister City Manager, Mister City Attorney, for working with us to place this on the agenda tonight and give us the opportunity to properly describe this exciting program. So we have identified the Millennium South Bay. We are currently under contract with the seller for this property. Quick general overview of the property, two hundred and thirty units built in twenty twenty-one. It's a LEED certified community. It's a beautiful community that, of course, you all voted on. And, you know, with its pool area resident lounge, fitness and co-working spaces. There have been some questions just about how best to build out and operate the restaurant spaces that are there. I want to tell the council tonight that large reserves will be funded upfront to build out those spaces. And, you know, our, our relationships with Ferring and Standard are top of class ourselves. If I, if I could make that suggestion and top of class eateries will be our target to bring into this space. It's going to make the project, you know, benefit not only the residents of the property itself, but, you know, workers in the area and the city of Hawthorne generally.
December, you have one more minute.
Okay, so here are some pictures of the property. This is a breakdown of the units, twenty-seven units in our studios. This just shows the breakdown of the number and the income bands that those serve. The main point of this slide is that monthly rental discounts for income will range from a hundred and thirty-two to nine hundred and thirty-two dollars per month. As John mentioned, no one's going to be displaced who's already living there. They will qualify and get reduced rents, or they will continue to pay their market rents. Aggregate resident savings at the property is projected to be over a million dollars per year. That's going to be an immense benefit to the city of Hawthorne. Disposable income allow folks to save for their first home, et cetera, et cetera. So just to give some numbers to the idea of the sale of the property, sixty-two million dollars if the city decides to compel the sale in year fifteen, two hundred and eighty-one million in year thirty. Even if, in the unlikely occurrence that the property did not increase in value at all over the life of the bonds, city would still receive upwards of a hundred and forty-four million dollars in revenue at the end. That could provide opportunities for city council to fund a new city hall, community center improvements. Or an interesting option would be reducing density via property acquisitions for parks and open spaces. Really, whatever the city council wants to do. And I just want to grab these last two items. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars will be provided to the city's general fund upon closing. Another a hundred and fifty thousand dollars will be provided to nonprofit community partners in the city, also upon closing, to be identified by city council members as you see fit. This is one quick example of a neighboring property that has been already brought into the JPA. We know this property very well. It's currently being managed by AMC. They manage all of our properties all over the country. I encourage you all to reach out. I can be made available and tour the property with you so you'll see the quality of management and of assets that we're bringing into this program. Really quickly, a standard communities and Ferring takes our community efforts very seriously. Separate and apart from the Joint Powers Authority and the Millennium South Bay's membership in it, we are, are really have invested time and resources to make our name as the community friendly developer in every city we've, we've worked in. In addition to, and I can go on and on about that, we've got some good stories to tell. I hope I have the opportunity to do maybe the next time I'm before you. But we will be setting aside sponsorship funds for city events like the Centennial Event at the airport, airshow, fireworks, other council initiatives. And I want to make sure that we are, are, our skill set is brought to bear for the city of Hawthorne. And that's what that last item is about, analyses of some underperforming city properties to improve the efficiency and reduce the negative impacts on the general fund. We think we can really add some value to our relationship, working with the city going forward. And thanks for the extra time. This is just a slide on, on a couple of us, on our companies. Thanks so much for the time tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir. But I do give an opportunity to, for the, for the council, if they have any questions. And let me see if there's any hands up from any of my colleagues. Oh, everybody has questions, oh my god. All right. I'm gonna go left to right on my screen. Everybody's gonna get a chance to speak, okay? Councilmember Patterson, then councilmember Montero, then Mayor Protem, and councilmember, well, Mayor Protem will go first since it's her item, and then Patterson, Montero, and Ray English. Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Thank you very much, mayor. All right, so I, I only have a couple of questions, but they're, they're kind of detailed. I want to know, first of all, does our participation count toward arena numbers? You know that we have a arena, I think it's approximately seventeen hundred, seventeen hundred additional arena units that we have to build or we have to make space for. And does participation in this program count toward arena numbers? And if so, in what way? Would it be a low mod, mod affordable, or what?
John, you wanna, you wanna answer that one?
Sure, well, thank you for that question, Mayor Protem. It's an important one and many of your peers have been asking the same question. So these, these, these units have been built. So the project would not qualify for arena credit at the low or the moderate level. The, the city would likely have received arena credit in the market rate category as part of its housing element when this project was originally planned for. That being said, we're working on, hopefully in the next session, amending some of the arena legislation. We have the League of Cities and CSAC, we've been talking with SCAG, OC Cog. It's important that cities do get recognition for these projects. It's very difficult to build ground up and get arena, especially at that moderate level. Long Beach, Anaheim, of your other peers, it's been pretty important to them as well. And so that's something that we're going to be working on. Luckily, you're just beginning your sixth cycle here in October. It's an eight-year cycle. And so we're very hopeful that we can obtain that retroactively in a future legislative session.
Thank you. My second question has to do with the restaurant. I have toured the, toured the facility and it is a beautiful facility, as you say. There is space for rest, for either two small restaurants or one large restaurant. And I wanted to ask you to consider knocking out the, the spade, knocking out the wall between the two small spaces so that you could have a really good size, high-quality restaurant in that space. Is that something you can consider?
Absolutely, it's kind of where we're leaning already on our first, you know, review of the project and how it sits and how the construction has developed. Absolutely.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Councilmember Patterson, then Councilmember Montero, and then Councilmember Ray English.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions, I just wanna, just draw attention to a couple of things that you mentioned. So you say, you said that there's no liability for the city, no administrative responsibility, but we'll be entitled to the equity that's created in the property?
Yes.
Could you kind of talk about that, like how that, how that works?
Sure. So the, the asset is going to appreciate and it's not an investment for CSCDA, it's not an investment for the project administrator and we can't have any private equity interest. So the future value of it needs to go to some entity or entity in the future. As our member, you know, we feel strongly that that should go back to the city and at the city's discretion, shared with some of your other government agency partners, whether you want to share with the county, school districts. Over time, the project will appreciate in value, the debt will be, have been paid off. It also allows you to determine what happens with the project in the future. There's never a risk of this project returning market rate or losing its affordability because you, as the city, control what happens to the project in the future. For newer assets, one thought is that you actually deepen affordability in the future. You may have the ability to put it into the tax credit program. Other cities have expressed interest in transferring it to a nonprofit. But you still retain the affordability, you don't have to own it, and the city would still receive all of that, that, those sales proceeds.
Yeah, that's it, thanks. Okay, Councilmember Montero?
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. I have a few questions, okay, so bear with me. First, I want the gentleman from the CSCDA to explain to the, to the people of Hawthorne about this bond that is not going to increase their property tax, that this bond is going to be paid by the proceeds of the rental unit. So explain that to the peoples, I want to make sure they're clear on that.
That's a, it's a great and a very important question, councilmember, and no different than if we were issuing bonds for a nonprofit or affordable housing project. Those, those would never become debts or obligation of the city in any way. They're limited obligations and they're only payable from rents derived from that project. It wouldn't increase taxes for any residents. It's not on the city's balance sheet. It doesn't pledge the city's credit rating in any way or otherwise, you know, have the city, you know, responsible for any repayment.
So, so, uh, thank you for that, yeah, because I want to make sure people understand that. So in, in fifteen years, right, so then the bond will be paid for?
So in year fifteen is the first year the city could force a sale of the asset. The bonds are anticipated to be paid off between year thirty and year thirty-five. If there's excess cash flow, the, the, the term that we use for this is a turbo bond. Because there's no equity shareholders, if there's excess cash flow, it just pays down the bond sooner. So, but in year fifteen, the city could force a sale, pay off the remaining debt, receive the future, you know, the equity that has accrued at that time and put that to other programs or other affordable housing if you wanted to.
Okay, thank you for that. Now, my next question, I, I want you guys to maybe explain a little bit about the management company that's going, would take over the project and manage the, the property. So I want to give a little synopsis of that company, please.
Sure. AMC is our chosen manager for all of the standard properties all over the country. That's why I would encourage you to maybe make a visit to Union South Bay in Carson. You'll get to see for yourself the quality of individuals, of service, of amenities, of maintenance that they provide. And we could get you more, you know, portfolio of everything they manage if you'd like.
Okay, and, and just to make sure again, any liability does not fall into the city, right? It goes to that GPA.
That's exactly.
That's right. So, under state law and the terms of the JPA agreement, no member is responsible for debts or liabilities of the JPA.
All right. At this time, how many units are vacant and how many are rented?
I will invite Mister Chris Cruz, our colleague, to, to answer that one.
Thank you.
Good evening, council and councilman Montero. Currently, the property is about forty percent occupied. So that leaves about sixty percent of the two hundred and thirty units, you know, ready to be filled by middle income residents. That's approximately a hundred and thirty-eight apartments that are currently vacant and can be instantly filled up by residents that qualify with their income.
Okay, so when you say residence, right? Let's say that we, the city, wants priority for our police office, for our firefighters, for our teachers, that they might be not living in the city of Hawthorne because they cannot afford it. But if they wanted to move in to Hawthorne and take, you know, benefit of this project, can you guys make priorities for the first responders?
Yeah, that's exactly right. We can, and, and that's a beautiful part of this program and, and how it was designed. You, you know, other cities have done preference for first responders, healthcare workers, public school teachers, even high school graduates. So that can certainly be tailored into the Public Benefit Agreement and their applications at the property will get priority review.
All right, okay, so. If I may, Mister Councilman, I would, that's really an opportunity for the council to dig into that a little bit and decide who you want to attract to Hawthorne and, and place that rental preference on those kind of folks. You know, whether it's folks that are already working there, so you'll cut down their drive time. You know, some cities are having a hard time, you know, hiring first responders, those kind of, those kind of folks that, that, and that, that will end up in the Public Benefit Agreement as however you, you direct.
Okay, that's, so my last question is, are we going to pay market value? Is it is compatible right now with what's going on with the, with the real estate in South Bay? Are we paying over price?
So that's a great question. And what we did yesterday, actually, was get a good understanding of where the other bids came in for this project, right? Because the definition of market value is you create a market and that's the sale of an asset. And wherever those bids come in at. Um, and wherever those bids come in at, the asset will trade. Um, three bids, uh, came in at the property at the same price that we have the deal under contract. Uh, and one bid came in, uh, a million dollars under. Um, so based on the, on those data points, you, you know, we would certainly, uh, uh, take the position that we're paying market, uh, value for this project.
So they didn't jack up the price because there was a lot of competition?
Uh, I can't, I can't tell you what the sellers did, but, but there are three independent, uh, y- you know. Uh, institutional buyers that all came in around the same price. And what differentiated, uh, the, the team that won the deal were the qualitative terms that came with that purchase. So time it takes to close, uh, deposit that's being put down, track record. Um, and so that's ultimately what decided, uh, you, you know, the seller to award the deal to our group here.
All right. Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna let you to go back to my colleagues and then I'll come back. Okay? Thank you. Thank you. Great, great answer. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Ray English.
Thank you. So I put my hand down. And while we're discussing what you just made mention, Chris, of the asset that will trade ultimately. Um, although there was a couple of bidders. It's my understanding that the more bidders there were, the price for rent will actually go up, correct? In other words, the, um, AMIs are not actual, that's being presented to us, correct? At some point, those rents are not going to be middle income. They're going to be higher.
Um, I, I don't believe so because the restrictions that are imposed on the property are, uh, you, you know, split into thirds, right? A third of the units will be reserved for residents making up to eighty percent AMI. So that's typically, you, you know, sixty-one to eighty percent AMI. Um, a third of the units will be reserved for residents making between eighty-one and a hundred percent AMI. And then a third will be reserved for residents making between a hundred-one and a hundred-twenty percent AMI. And those restrictions will be in place throughout the life of the project and the bond term.
So it's not going to make it, it's not, that the bidding process in fact did not hinder on the actual rents that folks would be paying, should they get a unit, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So they're gonna stay, um, what's been discussed and told to us, ultimately, middle income, right?
Absolutely. Yes, that's what this program is.
So in my tour of the facility, um, I also noticed that they were giving privilege. Uh, to SpaceX employees, et cetera, by reducing their price, uh, by five hundred dollars or so. It's my hope that we don't show, um, if you will, preference. But allowable for everybody to come to the table and be able to afford, uh, a unit there without having to, uh, be identified. Just because you work at a specific, uh, organization or corporation that you're, you're going to be coming in at a lesser cost. So that's my hope.
Yeah, and, and, and we can certainly carry that out. Um, you, you know, it was never our intention to give, uh, discounts to. Um, you, you know, uh, private corporation employees. That's not what this program is designed to do. Um, now, if you and your council members, um, would like to put in preference for, uh, you, you know, public school teachers or first responders. That can certainly be done, um, you, you know, and we'll take your lead on that.
Well, I know Councilmember Montero and I, in, in our years of, uh, service here, have always provided a program, uh, first-time homebuyers, right? So that's always been a first-time homebuyer program to, uh, entice, to, uh, facilitate in hopes of folks in, uh, service to. You know, students through teachers, through, uh, our, our emergency response workers, et cetera. And so, um, obviously, everyone matters is what I'm saying. I'm just trying not to, uh, give preference just because you live across the street at SpaceX. You're given an X a dollar amount less, okay? So, so I, I don't have that, that, uh, you know, unlike probably our mayor, who's the genius with emphasis on. You know, physics and everything else. I'm not a physics major, so, you know, I don't want to be deemed just because I don't work at SpaceX that I have to, you know, pay five hundred dollars more. That's all I'm saying. And I'm sure a lot of folks out there are saying, you know, I'm glad you brought that to everyone's attention, right? And then, second of all.
Elaborate on that?
Yes. Yes.
On the rental preference.
Yes.
Just a couple of other points. So the rep, this is going to be owned by CSCDA. We're a political subdivision, a government entity. Rental preference policies have to comply with all fair housing laws. Um, and so you can't provide a rental preference to a private corporation. For instance, in Anaheim. Um, they have a rental preference policy and it was first responders, it was teachers, healthcare workers. You couldn't put Disneyland. That would not comply with fair housing laws. Um, if you don't have a rental preference policy, you can still create those categories, obviously working with your city attorney. And we would put that right into the regulatory agreement, uh, for, uh, for the particular project.
Yeah.
It's not designed to.
Yeah. And I understand that because, you know, obviously, you know, there's no discrimination when it comes to, you know, providing housing, right? And we all know how much housing, uh, at this moment is important to many families. So, um, I want to go back into the, uh, commercial portion of the, of the building, which included, uh, as it is right now, just a slab of, uh. Cement, nothing there, right? Uh, hopes of having a, a restaurant, uh, at that facility that would include bathrooms. That would include a, uh, grease trap. That would include, um, what else did I say would be in there?
Probably ducts, ex- exhaust, you, you know, ventilation.
Yeah, ventilation, very important.
Yep.
Very important. How much do you think that you're all anticipating, uh, the improvements to be and you giving towards that?
Yeah, so, I mean, the space is a little over, uh, three thousand square feet. And so, uh, 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 the, the way these offers or, or these build-out packages. Um, are provided or, or based on basically market rates. Um, we will be funding upfront, as Darren mentioned, capital reserves. That will be more than enough to convert that space, that white box, the slab of cement, into a fully-built-out, um, restaurant. Uh, that could be leased to a top-of-class operator. Um, we will have reserves at the project. Um, upwards of two million dollars. Um, a large portion of that could be used to convert the commercial space. Uh, other parts of that will be used to be held in reserves to alleviate any capital expenditures that may arise. Uh, over the life of the project. Um, on top of that, we'll be reserving ongoing, uh, monies. Uh, per year, uh, to address any repairs and maintenance or unforeseen expenses.
Well, that's a given. Maintenance and all that, that's a given. You know that because you're a property management company. So that's neither here or there. I want to know what you're looking at with projection, projections for a restaurant. What's a dollar amount? Give me an estimate roughly.
Yeah, be- between free rent and the build-out, I mean, we could be looking upwards of six hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. More or less?
Sorry?
More or less?
Uh, pro- probably around there, yeah. Probably around six hundred thousand.
And I miss, I, I'm, I'm also assuming that all of this is guaranteed in writing?
Yeah, I mean, so our pro forma will be reviewed, um, and shared with the city. And so you can see, you, you know, what we are reserving, um, for these various items.
Okay. And how does, um, say, for instance, going back to, uh, insurance, how is it insured? How's the property insured?
Yeah, the, the, the property is insured, uh, y- you know, with, uh, uh, hazard, uh, and liability insurance. So, um, you, you know, that it will be covered, uh, y- you know, from a physical perspective as well as a liability perspective. So just like a conventional apartment complex, um, there will be proper coverage. Uh, CSCDA hires a third-party, um, consultant, uh, to review the insurance policies. Um, to make sure that they're in compliance and, uh, up to, uh, market standards. And, and we've done a handful of these transactions so far, uh, with John and his team, and, uh, that's never been an issue. Uh, making sure that the properties are, are fully insured.
And that's included inside the, that's included with the contract and that's included with regards to the years of term for this, uh, what is it, thirty years?
Yeah, so, so, uh, these policies will be renewed generally on an annual basis. Um, so, and, and the properties will always be covered by insurance. So every year, you renew the policies. Um, there's generally an inflationary expense, so every year it might stay flat, it might go up a bit. Um, rarely it goes down, uh, but, but yes, we, we're properly, uh, reserving for insurance, uh, throughout the life of the project.
And, and, and you'll see that in the pro forma. I mean, there's, there's a specific line item or a couple of them that, that will appear there.
I have other questions, but I, I think I'll wait and give my, the colleagues some turn.
All right.
I have another question.
All right, guys. Ed, oh, no, thank you. Everybody, everybody has good questions. Let's start, uh. Consolidating the questions, uh, so we can get on to the next presentation and to the rest of the city meeting. So I'm going to turn it over to, um, Councilmember Montero and then Mayor Protem. Go ahead. Let's just kind of summarize everything.
Yeah, it, it just, just two, two quick, uh, notes. Um, I want to find out, um. Let's say instead of, uh, eighty percent to one-twenty, can we, would say starting at seventy percent? What about those people that between sixty and seventy percent? What happened to them? Can we include them?
Yes, uh, they, they are included, uh, at this project. So remember, a third of the units are reserved generally for individuals making between sixty-one. And eighty percent AMI.
Okay, okay. Fantastic. And now my last thing, um. I just, um, for Ms. Valentine asked about the arena number, okay? There was a bill that was signed by the governor, AB seven-eight-seven. That allows to count the moderate, middle-income housing units towards arena number, uh, for at least eighty years for now. And so the bill is A, AB seven-eight-seven. That was signed by the governor recently to allow those, uh, numbers to be counted. Uh, towards our arena number because even two weeks ago, we have a presentation about our housing element. That the consultant actually, uh, suggests that the South Bay Millennium would be counted towards our arena numbers up to two hundred and thirty units. So, uh, it will be counted based on this new bill. So, and that's it for me, Mr. Mayor, but if, uh, if there is no more, uh, no, Ms. Valentine has questions. Because I want to give a directive, okay?
Go ahead, uh, Mayor Protem. Let's, let's go.
Oh, you can't hear you.
You're on mute.
Sorry. I wanted to ask you about security for the, uh, for the facility. What provision are you making for our security for facility to make certain all of the residents are safe? The, um, common areas are safe, the, um. The restaurant, if, you know, if and when it's built, uh, will be, well, you know, the, there's proper, appropriate security. The perimeter of the building so that people don't get in. What is your provision for that?
Yeah, great, great question. So the entire property, uh, is protected by controlled access points. Um, so unless you have a key specific to the property, you cannot access it. Um, you, you know, that's not the end-all be-all to, um, you know, security, and we know that. Uh, we are going to have contracted security guards that will be monitoring the property. Um, lastly, there's also CCTV, uh, security camera systems that were installed at the property and are monitored both on property and off-site.
So your, so your security, your security guards will be on, on duty at what time?
Yeah, so, uh, we don't own the property yet, but our plan is to have them during the evening. So the property will be staffed fully throughout the day, um, by our third-party property managers. And then we plan on having security guards cover the night hours.
And, and that is oftentimes, we'll, we'll ask them to patrol the, the local neighborhood, you know, the blocks surrounding the property too.
So during the day, you'll have full staffing and when the staff is, um, when the staff is, is, has completed their tour of duty. Then the security guards will come along. So there's no time in which the property is not being monitored.
There's, uh, y- you know, generally, we need to, so, uh, we need to work out the details of those contracts. That is our intention. Um, what we've done in other properties in the South Bay is they'll usually come around seven to eight. Um, there may be a gap between, you, you know, call it five-thirty and six to seven o'clock. Um, but we can certainly cover for that and increase the amount of time that these security guards are present at the property.
Thank you.
All right, guys. So I'll close it out. Uh, what is your average, uh, medium income for the city of Hawthorne that you've determined? That's a question. What is your, what is your AMI?
So, uh, these, these programs are based on county incomes. Um, so, and, and Los Angeles, uh, is pegged around seventy thousand. Hawthorne, we have pegged at around fifty-two thousand.
For your AMI?
Yes, is, what, what is the Hawthorne, uh, area mean income, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
Right.
Okay, a fifty, fifty-something thousand? Okay. All right. I just wanted to check. So I just think the, the council needs to be very sure that we're looking at the correct. Um, average, medium income so that we know, uh, which of our public servants that work here in the city of Hawthorne. Um, the targeted groups for the public benefit aspect of this program. Um, so we make sure that we know who we can, uh, bring into the umbrella to be able to, um, take advantage of these programs. Okay, so we need, we need to make sure that our data, the state's data, SCAG's data. And, uh, you know, and the gentleman's data is all in sync so that we can, uh, make sure that the right people are served. And I understand councilwoman's, uh, concerns about the SpaceX employees, you know. They're making over a hundred thousand, some of these, uh, uh, peoples, you know? And, uh, good for them. Okay, great engineering companies, tech money, tech money here in the city of Hawthorne. But, uh, my biggest concern, my biggest concern is, is with the rising rents. And, and Councilmember Montero knows this because he was working on a tenant-based, uh, rental assistance program. He understands and. I'm just putting it out there. I don't need to hide what I think. I'm concerned about residents of Hawthorne not being able to afford a place to live. And I want this to be another option for them. So if they, you know, if there's problems over there where they're at, that they could look at this, uh, situation here at Millennium and be able to be integrated into its housing. Uh, uh, benefit. So I think that we should all just not be afraid. I'm very concerned about regentrification here in the city of Hawthorne. I mean, I know people don't want to use that word, but I will. And, uh, we want to make sure that we don't lose the character that we have here in the city. And, uh, this could be an opportunity, but we really need to be. Uh, very strict about how we look at things and what we ask of this group, okay? That's all I'm saying.
And, and to your point, Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, the, the city council can identify current Hawthorne residents as one of the folks that get a rental preference. Which is really the earlier look at their applications.
That'd be good, that'd be good. And we, we need to establish what the verifiable, verifiable. With the method of verification that you guys are doing, what you need to do, we're supposed to be doing. Okay, not just word of mouth here, just to get this whole thing, because obviously you guys are not, you guys make money off of this in some way or other. And that's good for you. That's what it's all about too. Um, but there's a benefit here. I like to make sure that our residents have that. Okay, are we ready? Move on to the next one?
Mr. Mayor, hold on one second because I want to, um, I would like to, uh, give it back to, to our staff, the city manager and the city attorney. Uh, to, to proceed with this, uh, program, to, to, to sit down with the standard, uh, and the CSCDA, um, to come up with the next step, okay?
Yeah, it sounds like all we need is a, uh.
A resolution.
Put a, you know. Have the city attorney vet it and put a resolution on the agenda.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen, Chris Cruz and Darren Embry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
And John, John Pankower. Thank you.
I'm going to be looking, I'm going to be looking, I'm going to be looking at everything you said.
Uh-huh.
I'm going to be check T's, cross T's, dot I's.
And thank you to Mr. John Pankower too. Thank you.
And I know everything about, uh, uh, low income and middle income and high income. I know everything about that.
Thank you so much for your time.
Biggest standard and fairing of community partners.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Bush, please, bye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Ms. Dina, Elena Maloney, can you please come on screen? Elena Maloney. Thank, hi. Uh, Council, Mayor Protem, uh, please proceed with your presentation.
Yes, um, I, at this time, I will, um, I will, I will not repeat what I said before, but at this time, I'll, I will. Yes, um I at this time, I will um I will, I will not repeat what I said before, but at this time, I'll I will present. Ms. Elena Maloney, who is Executive Director of the New Star Family Justice Center. Good evening, Elena, and welcome.
Good evening, everyone, uh Mayor Vargas, council members. It's been a long time since I attended one of these meetings, so I'm happy to be here today. Um I wanna I wanna say a special thank you to uh Mayor Pro Tem Olivia Valentine for inviting us. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, so it's very important that. Uh we have opportunities to let the community know about our agency and the services that we offer. Um I have a presentation that's supposed to be uh. Uh PowerPoint presentation that submitted, yeah, there you go, okay. Can everybody see that one?
Yes.
There you go, okay. So I have only ten minutes, so I'm gonna talk really fast. Uh and but with the with the intentions that all of you will be coming by and visiting our center. We're just three blocks from you, so we're not too far. Um so um again, my name is Elena Maloney. I serve as the uh Executive Director of the New Star Family Justice Center. Um the the our agency is a non-shelter domestic violence. A service provider here in the city of Hawthorne and in the South Bay. We've been here in the city for about fourteen years now. Uh and uh you know, we feel it's our home. Uh our mission is to offer comprehensive services. That are designed to empower victims to become survivors and break the cycle of violence. And we accomplish this through advocacy, which is a very powerful tool. Uh with direct services and with collaborations with community agencies. All together helping clients reach their goals. Next slide, please. Um the uh the services that we offer, we begin with case management, which is a very, very important service. Uh the case manager uh the uh enrolls uh the client and and sees this client all throughout. Uh the time that they spend here with us. It begins with a needs assessment, which is very important, no two clients are alike. Uh we do a safety plan right from the beginning and all throughout a client stay with us. And we do an individual, individualized uh service plan for each client. Uh next uh slide, please. Uh our our education and counseling services include a ten week domestic violence. Education. It comes with certification, uh along with a ten weeks parenting classes. Uh these are very special classes that the method, that social workers request. Uh a lot of our clients come here, uh they are referred from Department of Children's and and Family Services. Uh the court system also refers clients to us along with the police department. Uh but part of the program, they have to show, the clients have to show that they have completed uh these services. Um we also offer counseling um individual and as well as empowerment groups. And they are led by our therapist who has more than three thousand. Uh counseling hours and she speci specializes working with victims of domestic violence. So she does a very good job in helping clients coming out of their trauma of that particular situation they're in. Um I am proud to say that we are offering all of our services, both in English and in Spanish. Uh and you 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 know, as fulfilling the needs, you know, of the community here. Next slide, please. Uh additional service that we have, um some of these services are offered by us and some are offered by our partner agencies. Uh one of the things that we do here on site is uh uh we assist with restraining orders. Actually, we do quite a good job of helping victims filing restraining orders. Um we uh assist them with um. Uh e- even sending an advocate to court once again, when, once they open up again, uh but we. Tell them all about the process, we help them with their paperwork, and this is a very important service. Uh we uh help clients enroll in benefits. Uh we help them with the life skills program. Um and then uh we have uh the um partner agencies that we can refer them to. Uh for things like job revenue, job readiness assistance, uh housing assistance. Uh legal uh with um Uvisa or Vawa services. Um two programs that we have, there are actually outreach programs, they are our own in-house programs, are the anti-bullying art contest. Which we, which we do it right in October and we uh work with the Hawthorne School District. This is going on right now, by the way, as I speak. Um and uh this is the time when we bring the kids, once they're completed uh the program, the winners. Uh we bring them right here to this chamber and we have them give a presentation about what they learned and we invite all of you to be part of that presentation. Uh and the other outreach program we have is with the teens at the high school. The Teen Dating Violence Prevention Program, which we offer in um in the month of February, each February. Um the next uh slide, please. So these are a couple of pictures of our center. Uh and these are just pictures and honestly, they don't do uh good service to what we really have here. Uh about three years ago, we received a major grant from um. Uh from the state, from the governor's office, which allowed us to move to our current facility, which is about seven thousand square feet. So we have lots of really good space. Um and uh so what you're seeing here right now is a family room, which is the first place where a client comes. We offer them the family room, it's comfortable, they may stay here for a while, so they have to be in a comfortable place. Adjacent to the family room, we have children's playroom. We ask people to please call us um if they have children with them. So we can have our volunteers uh to mend the children while the uh while they're taking services with us. Next slide, please. Uh you're looking here at one of our counseling rooms, we have several of them. Um it's very private and uh below there, you see our work area. And again, you can't see how big it is, but it's really very big. Uh so on the, on one side of it is where my staff has their offices. And on the other side is where the partner agencies have their offices. And the Family Justice Center program is unique in that we partner with community agencies and we actually offer them. On-site space at no cost. They can have an office right here. Uh in exchange for offering their services at no cost to all of the clients that walk through our doors. All of our services are free. Victims of domestic violence do not have money. If they had money, they would have their own lawyers. If they had money, uh they could move somewhere else where they're not abused. So obviously, they come to us needy and they they just need our support. Um uh let's see, uh one last slide, I believe I have. Uh which is uh one more slide after this, yes? Okay, there we go. Uh so this month, uh October Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we are doing an event. It's an online event because obviously we can't do anything physical yet. Um but every Tuesday. People on our list, of course, hopefully more of you will also be on our list, uh we receive an email like this and. Uh the email features one of our clients telling her story. These are real clients with real stories and real outcomes. Uh and this is to to uh reach out to the community and uh. And educate them about what is domestic violence, because people think domestic violence is only about black eye. No, it's much more than that. Um addition, in addition to this, um um the twenty ninth of this month, so October twenty ninth. We are hosting a uh VIP, small VIP event, just uh for a couple hours, maybe two to four. We have a flyer that we are putting together and we will mail it out to you. Uh and uh so we hope everybody will come to that event, uh so we can give you a tour of the facility. We can talk a little bit more and you can see firsthand uh what a client would receive when they come here. Um I want to end with uh but hopefully you have some questions. I wanna end end uh by saying that. Um this is the second year that we uh are receiving a block rent from the city of Hawthorne. And uh we are very thankful about that because um it's helping us uh take care of more clients. Uh I want to say that um the last three months have been excellent for us. We uh have are working uh more closely now with the department uh with the uh police department. Um in particular with Sergeant Saldana, who calls us uh regularly now and um. And refers clients to us. Uh the statistics are one in three women will uh. Uh will be affected by domestic violence at some point in their lifetime. And uh it takes six to seven tries before a victim can be disconnected from her abuser. And during this six to seven tries, what that means is the police department maybe at their, at their address that many times. So we want to cut that down, we want it to be only one time. And uh so we are very happy to work with uh Chi-Fishi and the police, uh police and the whole police force there. Uh to um serve victims of domestic violence here in the city of Hawthorne.
Thank you, Ms. Maloney. Uh I'm going to ask Mayor Pro Tem, go ahead, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Maloney. That was a very great summary of the work that you do. Now, I understand there's been a spike in domestic violence uh cases in the last one or two years. Could you speak to why that would be?
Yes, because of COVID. Now, the victim is trapped in the house with the abuser and they can't call for help. Uh they can't go anywhere. Uh so we've seen uh in the first two months, actually, there was a a a quietness. Very eerie. We were wondering what happened, what, suddenly domestic violence ended? And then all of a sudden, the phones were ringing like crazy and um. As you know, we had to take all of our services and 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 provide them online because, you know, we were shut down for a while. Uh so it was a, it was a pretty hectic year, but that's that's the reason, is because of COVID and and people were trapped in the home.
And about how many clients do you service on a yearly basis?
Well, we're looking at between two hundred and two fifty. Um you know, I'm saying families when I say that because a family could be one person, it could be three people. Uh we also enroll kids too in our program, so we we just leave it at that and we say a couple hundred families.
And my last question is, I think you said you're a non-shelter facility. But but if someone comes to you and needs shelter, what do, what are you able to do?
So uh so so what we're able to do is refer into a shelter, but not just refer them. We have access to a portal. Uh so every morning we'll be coming, the case manager turns on the portal to see which shelter has an opening. And for what type of family. So as we get the calls and say somebody called and we find out that actually that person is in danger. They should not even come to our center, they need to go to a shelter. We have the information available right in front of us. That we can ask the client to go ahead and call for shelter services. We're not allowed to call, the client has to call themselves. We can walk with them along the way, especially if they need translation, like if they don't speak English and then we can do that part, but the client themselves have to call. But we have information ready in our hands.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Montero.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh thank you, Ms. Maloney, for coming and to keep domestic violence in the forefront. Because like I said, October is the awareness month, but it should be every month, right?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, so I wanna thank you for your service and um special to partner with the city. While we have uh uh HPD with the Children Family Service and and the school district. Uh you know, you have been done outstanding job without the kids about the bully uh project. So thank you very much for your service and definitely uh I'm gonna be your VIP on the twenty ninth.
Absolutely, we have a lot of wonderful people coming, other uh I think the supervisor, Honey Mitchell, will be sending our representative and other people. So we'd love to see all of you, but I'll send that in invitation as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, man, for being here and for presenting. Have a great uh evening.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, please read the guidelines for our communications, sir.
Okay, uh pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five four point three. Our remarks shall be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During our communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager. For study, investigation, report, or recommendation.
Alright, do we have any communications?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have received no emails regarding public comment for tonight's agenda. We have received two speakers uh for tonight's oral communications.
Go ahead.
Okay. Fan is gonna be on.
And hi, our first speaker is Amy Shepherd. Go ahead, Amy, you have three minutes.
Oh, great. Thank you for for allowing me to speak tonight. I know in a New World with the Joe meetings, uh they're not my favorite. Um but I figured out how to put it on my TV and I've been watching. Um so I was very pleased with the the middle income presentation. I did have one question. Um in regards to just what's been happening with the COVID and the eviction moratorium. Uh in terms of the bond repayment, I know he he mentioned like a two million dollar reserve. Is that the only safety net that the city has in terms of repaying the bond? Um if we see another market dip like we have or moratorium where people don't have to pay their rent. Um that would be my only question. Otherwise, I'm really excited that the cities may be considering getting into the real estate business. And uh putting some of these profits back into the general fund. Um additionally, uh the main reason that I actually wanted to call tonight was the the incident at the Rocket. Obviously, it's pretty horrific um and appalling, and I know that I I've spoken to a couple council members. Uh but I've been a long time proponent of of youth pre- prevention programs. Um being put in place in the city to kind of help these things so that we have outlets for the youth. Um so that they don't have to go sit at the bar. Um and I see on the agenda that we have. Angel City Football Club coming, uh and maybe, you know, interested in doing a training facility here. So I, you know, I just wanna lend my support to a program like that. Um from what I've heard and what I've read, this is something that's, you know, backed by celebrities and a great outlet for girls. Um and just, you know, some family entertainment for us in the city and obviously. Uh something to go towards development and we'll call entertainment aspect of what's going on with the SoFi Stadium. And a way for us to capitalize um on on that, you know, whole momentum. Um so I hope that this gets some support from city council and some residents and that. You know, I know we've talked a long time about doing something with Memorial Center, but I think this would be um. Something really, you know, beneficial to our city, uh especially if they can give money back to some of our programs. So I thank Councilwoman English um for bringing that to my attention. Uh and Mr. Mr. Patterson as well for supporting this. Um and I just, I hope that this incident at the Rocket, I really hope that we can hear from the police chief. Um and some response to this. Uh this is like the fifth or sixth incident in the city that's a fatality. And I think it's just getting a little overwhelming with the chaos. Uh so the more positive things we can bring to the city and the more we can see the police chief. Uh and learn what they're doing to sort of combat all of this crime. Um I'd be really grateful to to hear from you guys. Uh and the police chief, and again, thank you to the council members who are supporting youth activities, you know, all over the city. I think the park renovations that we've seen are are pretty incredible. I've been walking out Holly Park, so thank you again for all your work.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd.
Go ahead to the next speaker.
Yes, next we have Mr. Ruben Sanchez. Mr. Sanchez, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Name is Ruben Sanchez. I'm with the North Hawthorne Community Association. I'm calling about a situation that occurred. One of my board members, she was sexually assaulted by a vagrant with criminal behavior in North Hawthorne in past. And a few weeks ago, I wanted to clarify something. The homeless people in our area, they've been supported, they've been helped by our police department. They've been doing a great job and giving them resources and housing them. The the problem is that we're having are the vagrants with this criminal behavior. You know, right now, um all I'm asking right now, uh when we talk to the resident, all we were asking for is honesty. Honesty from the council, honesty from everyone out there. Uh uh tell the people, uh for what I found out. Is that we spent over twenty thousand dollars to clean up these encampments. Twenty thousand dollars, that's a lot of money from from for from Hawthorne. Did you also know that there are more homeless, um more homeless nonprofit organizations in the state of California than there are homeless people? Did you know that there are four, the top four hundred nonprofits uh for homeless people in California receive over one billion dollars? Of donations and assets. And 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 why is it that we don't see any of this money? Why isn't it, we don't see any resources? Because we have poor leadership. We have poor leadership, and I'm not speaking, I'm not speaking about you guys or something. I'm talking about the Maxine Waters, I'm talking about the Stephen Bradford, I'm talking about the Gavin Newsom, okay? This is where 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 we're at, but the only, the only reason it comes back to you as the council is because you guys endorse these people. These people endorse you. So I said, we need to take a step back. We need to stop pointing fingers at our Hawthorne Police Department, our public works and our code enforcement. We need to stop pointing these fingers, and what we need to do, how about this, here's an, here's an idea. All five of you, maybe on a weekend, go out, go out with with public works, go out with public works and start doing some photo ops. Start cleaning up some of the uh vagrant feces that they leave behind. Start counting the the syringes that they're leaving in these encampments, the kitty porn that they they have in these encampments. You know, this is what you guys need to be doing. This way, all five of you could understand and be at the same level at the re- as the resident. At the Hawthorne Police Department, Public Works and Code Enforcement. This way, you know, you guys can understand and say, hey, residents are right. You know, the Stephen Bradford, the Maxine Waters, the Gavin Newsom and all these other politicians, they set policy to support these vagrants. They set policy out there, you know, but yet you guys want to fight amongst each other. You guys are a team. All of them, Hawthorne Police, Code Enforcement and Public Works, you guys need to be working together. And hold people to account like the politicians, because at the end, all that money that I just mentioned with the billions of dollars, that goes back to politics. That goes back to, to the developers. As you know, they're gonna be popping up because they want housing. They want housing and that, that's why they use these vagrants in our street. Because they want housing and they know that the residents can't put up no more.
You have fifteen seconds, sir.
You guys need to stand up. Either you stand up for Team Hawthorne or you're gonna stand up for the, the team politicians. Which you have already paraded around like Maxine Waters. Okay, so, uh, lawyer up, go after Caltrans for housing them and go after these politicians.
You're out of time, sir.
Stop pointing fingers. And, and on the poll, I just wanted to say thank you for what you're doing with the, with the food drive. That's a great job that you're doing out there. Uh, hope, uh, we can help you guys out on the next event. Alright?
Have a good night. Thank you, sir.
Alright, bye bye.
Anyone else?
Other comments?
Okay, we're going to give about thirty seconds because there's a lag time. Plus, we want to give thirty seconds for anybody that's calling in. Okay? So let's just. Okay, thank you. That's about those thirty seconds. So if there's no more speakers, I declare oral communication closed, so ordered. Clerk, your consent calendar, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there are no bids or public hearings tonight. However, I have seven items on my consent calendar. Um, the, the items are item seven, eight, nine, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen for your consideration and approval. Item seven.
Um, is there a motion?
No, there, I, I'd like to pull item fourteen.
Alright, let's take a quick look. On what items did you mention, uh, Mr. City Clerk, all the way up to fifteen?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Item, item fourteen is pulled.
Okay.
So, uh, I, we, a motion is being made for, I'm making a motion for all other items, with the exception of fourteen.
Second.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, he not supposed to read to each item?
Yeah, no, that, I just make an emotion a second, so now he gets to read them all.
Yeah, I'm gonna, so should I go ahead and skip item fourteen then?
Yeah, read, uh, read that into the record once it comes up for vote. Okay.
Item seven, approval of city council minutes for the regular meetings of August twenty fourth, twenty twenty one, and the special meeting of September twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. Item A, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and/or ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item nine, city treasurer's request approval of the warrants. Item twelve, resolution number eight three zero five, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California. Creating a cannabis program working committee. Item thirteen, resolution number eight three zero six, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California. Ratify, re-ratifying the proclamation of a state of emergency by Governor Newsom on March fourth, twenty twenty. And re-authorizing remote teleconference meetings of the city council commissions and committees of the city of Hawthorne, California. For thirty, for a thirty day period beginning October twelfth, twenty twenty one, through November eleventh, twenty twenty one. Pursuant to the Ralphie, Ralphie and Brown Act and Assembly Bill number three sixty one. Item number fifteen, resolution number eight three zero eight, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California. Approving the blanket authority to file applications for grant funds for the LA County Regional Bank Park and Open Space District for Measure A. Funding for projects and programs. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the clerk's consent calendar. I have a motion to approve item seven, eight, nine, twelve, thirteen, and fifteen.
It's already been granted. Uh, roll call, uh, roll call vote, please.
Okay, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
For the benefit of the city clerk, I made the motion. Who made the second, please?
I did.
Okay, it's, uh, Mayor Proten made the second, okay?
Thank you.
Go ahead, discussion on item fourteen.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. With regards to resolution eighty three oh seven, uh, Boys and Girls Club of Carson in partnership with the city. Of Hawthorne, I'd like to just amend the resolution to show also partnership with the, our teen center. We can't forget our teen center. So if city attorney, city manager could please make the amendment and, uh, implement that, please. That's it. If I could make a motion on that.
Uh, just, just a moment, just for the, just so that they know exactly where to interdil- interlineate, uh, delineate that. Uh, Mr. Mr. City Attorney, where in the resolution will you be able to put a statement for that, just so we can know?
Councilwoman English, where specifically did you see that, that we're missing the, the teen center?
Yes, I, at the very bottom, which is, uh, the second, um, the second paragraph before the end of the, um, complete. Um, resolution where it indicates, um, the expanding learning programs to current community services and program. And at the very end where it says, whereas, uh, BGCC will participate as a meaningful active partner to the city of Hawthorne and the teen center. As they address the needs of the kids and families of the community. And there's other areas too can, that also could be implemented. It's just to show that we're in partnership fully to include the teen center. Thank you, Mayor.
And we will make that correction and the council can go ahead and, and, and make a move to. To accept and approve resolution eight three zero seven with those corrections.
So we can do that now, correct?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor Proten, uh, uh, Councilwoman?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion at this time, Mayor.
Second, alright. Roll call vote?
Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Okay. Item six, and item sixteen, the public hearings, there aren't any today. Um, there are no ordinances for today. That's item seventeen, so there's none to consider today. And general matters, uh, we have item number nineteen, uh, which is general matters. Uh, which is talking about Assembly Bill fourteen fourteen on the sole, solar panel regulations. Um, Director Wang, uh, can you, uh, give us a, uh, a quick report on that, please?
Good evening, uh, ladies, gentlemen, I'm counsel. Um, I'm reporting to you regarding the. Execution of the Assembly Bill, uh, fourteen fourteen. Uh, before I joined, you know, the city and I think all the solar panel was treated as the same. As regular plan. So basically, you know, the, we were, uh, charging. Um, per, as, based on their valuation and the construction cost and with our percentage based on the fee. Uh, later, now that I was, uh, aware of the Assembly Bill fourteen fourteen. So immediately Building and Safety, um, revised all the policy. And right now, we are, currently, we charge the plan check fee and the permit fee. Per the, no, the, uh, uh, mandated requirement per Assembly Bill fourteen fourteen, which is in residential. Uh, our maximum, uh, charge is four hundred fifty dollars. Um, for a plan check and the permit fee together. And for commercial building, for commercial project, our maximum charge will be one thousand dollars. Per, uh, for each, you know, project, including plan check and permit fee. Currently, you know, the, uh, city, uh, Assembly Bill fourteen fourteen do allow. The city, uh, uh, recover their, uh, costs based on the, uh, study. And Building and Safety is planned to work with the city attorney and doing the fee study. And if, you know, the, our actual cost over the state mandate. Uh, uh, the number of the state mandated, you know, to collection. And however, know that we are working with a consultant to do the fee study right now. So the result is not come out yet. At this time, uh, we expedite all the, uh, solar panel project. Solar panel project is the only item we're allowing them to submit digitally at this time. Right after the city hall open. And also we have our plan checker and our building inspector who has a electrical, uh, uh, specialty. And doing the both, um, solar panel plan check. And also, uh, we're trying to keep all the solar panel plan check, uh, correction to be done within two week. And then for their, you know, the return, you know, the resumeto, we're trying to get it out within one week. Uh, this conclude my report.
Okay, any questions?
To the chair, just real quick.
Yes.
Just want to thank you, uh, Mr. Wang. Uh, there's been a lot of residents that have shown interest in solar panels. Our community is changing. Uh, as you know, Councilmember Montero. On, uh, the Clean Power Alliance of Southern California, where we're recruiting energy at a lower cost than Edison. However, it might not be as low as we'd like it to be. At least it's a few cents less. However, there's great interest and there's folks that have been calling with regards to processes. And I just wanted to make sure that our policy legislation is in line with what the state is saying. And, um, the, the ordinance, uh, I should say, the Assembly Bill fourteen fourteen is important. So that can you include all of that and bring that back as in a resolution, uh, city attorney, city manager? To sure that we have that, uh, in writing correctly so that we could know exactly, uh, how much, uh, is, is allowable in cost. Uh, to the consumer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, um. So I'm going to make a motion to file and continue with the program through twenty twenty two. Um, do I have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English? Oh, you're muted, Ms. English.
Yes, sorry.
Mayor, Mayor Proten Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and councilmembers voting yes.
So that vote is basically accepting, uh, the report. Item twenty is the city of Hawthorne's investment report for the quarter which ended on June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. The city treasurer, Greg Fallon, please proceed with the matter at hand, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to report on the investments, uh, for June thirtieth. Um, as, I mean, I don't know if, uh, we can bring up the investment report, but I'll just kind of go over the numbers quickly. I don't think it's necessary. Uh, basically, interest rates are dropping, as you can see from the, uh, the interest rate returns. Um, but, uh, you know, I'm hoping that we can get more money into the working of, uh, of, uh. Multi-bank securities to kind of do some more laddered investments, uh, long term. Um, and there's a lot of, you know, cash available right now. And I think there's a good amount that we could be putting into these longer ladders. And that's something that I want to hopefully get on the agenda for, for the next meeting. Um, and that is really all there is to it. If, if people want to ask me some questions, feel free to.
Anything from anyone?
I have a.
Yes, Councilmember Patterson.
Yeah, this is, this is overall comments directed, I know, in combination to, to the city treasurer and, and the finance director. But I, I noticed that we have, um. Some monies in investment sweep account. I remember that was set up, uh, for specific purposes in the past, but according to your report. It's not paying any interest anymore, so we probably want to consider putting that into the money market account. Um, and I really use that sweep account until there, uh, is, is providing some better interest, right? Showing it's paying point oh one percent versus the money market account is at point one percent. So, I mean, that's, you know. Not a lot of money, but it's a big difference in interest. Um. Yeah, and those are like, we do have a substantial amount of money in, in our money market account. So, uh, still would like to see some type of cash management strategy that really provides to how much money we're gonna keep. Um, checking how much we were gonna keep in our, our life account, how much we kept in, uh, money market funds. And how much would be invested, uh, for, you know, some type of term, so.
Yeah, I mean, uh, let's go on, right? Yeah, uh, so, but you know, part of the thing is, you're right. I mean, and I agree, like, you know, some kind of, uh, policy to follow. But right now, I can't just go move money out of the money market into, you know, like MBS. I have to put it before the council, which I'm trying to do, you know, uh, to, to move it along. Uh, but, you know, it seems like, you know, for public information, we have to. I can't, you know, can't just move money, uh, between the accounts. I, I don't know if it's possible where you could just authorize that or if.
Well, uh, uh, a cash management policy would kind of do that, right? So if the cash management policy dictated that at a certain threshold, money should be moved from one type of strategy to another, to another type of strategy. Then that would automatically, you automatically have that authorization to, to do so, you know, work with the finance director. So that's why I think that, that cash management policy is, is valuable, because of always give, already give pre-authorization. To place money in certain type of buckets.
Right. I just, yeah, the only problem with policies is like, it just, uh. You know, things change or there's different reasons to do things and then you're always updating policies and whatnot. But I do feel like, you know, accountability and trust with, okay, the treasurer, okay, finance, you know, knows how to, you know, somewhat move money arounds. But, uh, you know, again, I'll work within the, try to do both, you know, work on a better policy. And then maybe also there could be more, you know, direct accountability just to like the treasurer or something. Where he could actually, you know, be responsible for, you know, just moving stuff. But again, I don't know if this is, you know, public information, it has to be done this way. But, uh, you know, I come more from like a private sector, so it's just, it's different, but I, I am learning.
Are we good, Councilmember Patterson? Yes, okay, Councilmember Montero?
Um, hello, Mr. Fowler. Thank you for, uh, for bringing us this report. Just in the future, if, if you recommend, uh, anything to be moved or to go to different, uh. Uh, account, right, a- and tell us the risks, okay? So we, we want to see what is the, what is the minimal risk or the potential risk? What it is, what it is, if, if we would move the money market, money to Morgan Guarantee Trust. So we want to see, uh, what's the risk and what's the benefit to the city, alright?
Are we good?
Follow me?
Yeah, no, I just, um, I mean, I feel like I, the risk, there really isn't any risk.
But we want to see that in writing, too.
Yeah, because, I mean, the thing with risk, you know, um, the risk of losing value would be like you have to sell, you know, a fixed instrument. You know, before it matures, if interest rates drop, but there's never really a risk. If you're, you're responsible with your cash management and you're holding everything to term, then you don't really lose any, you know, any kind of money. Let's say, risk. But, uh, you know, that's a common thing, like if you look at the fair market value of, you know, fixed securities, it could be lower. You'll be like, I lost, you know, some money. That's not really how it works. If you hold something in maturity, there's no loss. And, you know, it's, it's the investment, you know, portfolio and, you know, things, the rules show, like you can't invest in stuff that loses, you know, value. But that's the risk. So like, just as a general risk rule, the only risk is like if you get yourself in a bind where you need money and it's in, early invested. Then you could lose, that, that's where you can lose some, um, you know, principal, let's say.
Yeah, one, one, one thing to, just to keep in mind also, uh, uh, not potential risk, but also what is that, the, the value of that company? To show us, uh, a, a progress, I, I, this, uh, this investment firm has been a solid company. That is, the return has been, you know, ten percent, twelve percent, whatever, on a study five-year course.
Well, that's the problem. Like, we don't want to get into every time, every time the treasurer makes a financial decision, it's, you know, an investment committee and everyone needs to. I mean, uh, from my own mind, it's like pretty straightforward, the investments here and the risk is minimal. And, um, you know, I don't feel like if it's, if it's something that needs to be discussed a lot, I get it. I just feel like it'd be like not such a great use of time. Like, there's got to be some accountability for the person who's managing the investments to do a good job. And then if they do a bad job, you know, instead of, you know, passing, I guess it's more of like a public thing where you kind of do things by committee and it's consensus. And like, there's no like one individual that's accountable, like, hey, you messed up sort of thing. It's like more of a, uh, am I going too far here? So.
No, yeah, you're not, because, because it is valid point, because when you think about it, because our finance department, for example. Um, we do not have like an investment person there that would be eye on our money, right? So if it was someone, someone else in, uh, somebody else's hand, and that's what I'm saying. Is that, it's, 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 it's a risk or, or they have a track record of being a good market strategist, right? So that's, that's the kind of thing that I'm looking between, you know, the, the, those companies that we, are we trying to do it, you know, what can?
I, I, I actually totally agree with your risk. I I I actually totally agree with your risk in who's managing it, uh that does make a lot of sense. I just, I I think that makes a lot of sense. I think the the actual investments are not so much, but you're right, as far as. Who knows gets elected and, you know, but I mean, there are there are controls, so, but. Um, yeah, everything's uh, you know, we're making progress and uh if there's any other questions.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Um I make a motion to receive and file uh uh treasurer Gregory Fallon's uh report.
Second.
Uh my, okay, we couldn't hear you, Mayor Proton, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to take Councilmember Montero's second.
Okay.
Okay, uh roll call vote please.
Hey, Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray English?
Yes, uh, yes.
Mayor, wait, there we got it. Uh Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote, the vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Okay, uh. For this next item, we're gonna be talking about the illegal dumping program. I'm gonna ask staff to see if they if they do have the number for the illegal dumping hotline. Uh Eric, if you could post it up at an appropriate time during our conversation. If not, um if you could just uh, we could just announce it for everyone. Okay? Go ahead. Uh. City manager Von Norris, go ahead and maybe present, or whoever's gonna present.
Yeah, uh good evening, Mayor Mayor Proton, council members. We're gonna have our public works director Alan Lang uh give an update on our legal dumping. And our efforts to work together to clean the city of Hawthorne. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you. Uh good evening, good evening, uh mayor and city council. Um the illegal dumping, as we all know, is a growing problem. Uh the public works moved the approval of the city council's approval in August twenty twenty. Has launched a illegal dumping hotline program. Uh this program, along with the website and emails, has helped us identify area of illegal dumping. And we also have partnered with cities, contractors um. For a faster respond to resolve the i- illegal dumping issues. Uh we also done outreach um to the residents, um and also at the same time. Increase residents awareness of Republic Services, um services of providing. Twenty bulky item pickup per year. Um for the Republic Services, they have averaged a bulky item pickup of uh two hundred and fifty tons per month. Uh as for the city, um with the illegal dumping hotline program. Uh we, on average, each month we have received seventy emails, sixty phone calls. Uh three hundred and twenty pickup locations and has collected hundred eighty tons of bulky items. Um in, also for us to improve our city, we also have staff. That monitor and drive through all major streets in the city. Uh such as Hawthorne Boulevard, El Segundo, Rosecrand, uh Cranshaw and et cetera. We also have. Um. Uh a a crew to monitor and drive through all the common dumping area and alleys. And pick up any illegal dumping uh for at least three times a week. Um so that's pretty much conclude my report tonight.
And so we just wanna clarify that we're talking specifically about illegal bulk item dumping.
Yes.
Yes.
That's correct.
This is not the other items that I'm I'm gonna be addressing in a little bit. The chair. Uh who was first? Who was first? I don't know.
Me.
Miss English.
Okay, council member English, Mayor Proton, then uh council member Montero, let's do it.
Well, first of all, let me thank uh the Public Works Department and also let me thank uh Republic Services. I spoke with them extensively. On how they needed to assist us further by implementing additionally their workman, work, workmen uh hours. Uh staff and also speaking with the Department of Public Works in in tangent to see how we could collaborate efforts to assure that. Our bulky items are picked up, not sitting for weeks at uh at at, you know, for lengths of time. Uh bulky items includes, you know, uh furniture, anything, um mattresses, dressers, et cetera. And it's important too that uh in our educational uh tool that we're gonna be in in, that they've already implemented. Uh materials and and basically how to properly dispose of bulky items. Uh I wanna make sure that folks understand, it's important for staff to know exactly where the items are located. So giving further directions, whether or not it's in front of your your property, in front of someone else's property, with the with the correct address. Whether it's in the alley in the rear of your apartment or your home, whether or not it's um at a curb with intersections. Either east, west, north, or south, that's very important so that they it could they could easily identify it. Um, it's been working because I've had residents calling me and asking me to assist them with uh getting um. Their items picked up, and we need to just do more to assist uh through either. Making magnets available so that we could put them on folks uh uh refrigerators, we could maybe send those out through billing. Um, you know, businesses and residents, um leaflets or whatever that it could be put into the billings. Of their um public works, uh et cetera. Again, materials that's gonna just give them a phone number to call directly to make a. An appointment or schedule of sorts to have their items picked up, so. I just wanna thank the Public Works Department, uh Department of Public Works, Wreckin Parks, our staff. Uh Martinez, everybody involved. I also had asked a bond to work exclusive on a rapid response, and so. Uh that altogether is addressing our dumping, and for folks to tell me, where I've had folks tell me previously. That there is no dumping in Hawthorne and that our city looks beautiful. I don't know where you're living. But we do have, in fact, dumping, and we're doing better. And I just wanna thank everybody that has been assisting us, I really do, because it's making a difference. We just need to continue the momentum. And assure that we're doing our part to report dumping, whether it's yours or not. It doesn't want, you know, we don't want it sitting there for long periods of time, especially along the railroad, so that's important. Thank you.
Do we have the number that we can post up? Real quick, uh Alan, what's the number, so that people know what to call?
Um, I actually don't have the number in front of me, uh but we will advertise it.
Okay.
Okay, what we can do, what we can do, Mayor, we'll put it on social media and we'll put it on our uh city website.
Okay, go ahead. Uh Councilmember uh Montero?
Uh, it was Miss Valentine.
No, did you say that? Okay, oh, okay, go ahead, Mayor Proton.
All right, so I wanna address the illegal dumping in the alleys, because I know that's a special issue.
Yeah.
And and I think that even it it's it it even um. Allows for more accountability, and I'd like to um ask the city attorney about this as well. Um, where there there are places where there is a lot of dumping in alleys. And I'm specifically speaking about a place on a hundred and fifteenth street, where I'm constantly being told that there's more. Dumping of just furniture items or whatever in that alley. So, since we know who the owner of the building is. Is it possible that we can cite the owners? Can we, can we pass a resolution to cite the owners? Of um, of uh, of a building where there is illegal dumping and where it's a constant problem? Can we send them a warning and then and then begin to cite them? Is that something we can do legally? Can you please look into that?
I will, I'll I'll look into that, uh just um, just on the surface of it, I. I think that there can be some type of code enforcement done on that, and there can be a citation issue to um. To bring the property into compliance if the property is being dumped on the. Um the real estate that's owned by this sp- a specific person, property owner. Um but I I'm sure there is a code that we can use to at least to gain compliance in the future.
Yeah, I would like to see that done, because I think that, um especially where you have, like I said, especially where you you have a continuous issue. Where there's continuous dumping of uh furniture items or whatever, large bulky items in alleys. And everyone knows where it's coming from. It's not like they don't know that where this is coming from. It's coming from a particular apartment building. And that apartment building has an owner, so I don't, I I'd like to address that issue and and look into. Whether we can cite, whether we can warn the owner and then begin to cite the owners, where we. Where we have a way of identifying who the owners of those buildings are.
I'll look into that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, yeah, actually, yeah, I I wanna say thank you to the public works and Alan and and and. Especially the orange shirts that's been going around to pick up the bulk items. But again, also thank to the Republic Service, because since two thousand nineteen, you know, we did amend the contract uh for them. To allow, you know, people to call to pick up twenty item of the bulk item. So it's unfortunately that people still put those items on the on the street. Um and I would love to see if the Republic would, you know, every month when they send the bill, the trash bill. Is to include like a flyer telling people, you know, how to call that one in a hundred number. And to tell them that they should call a few days before the cleaning street going through, because that's what they're supposed to be doing, you know. Put the, put the bulk item the night before your sweep, your street sweeping, right? Uh on the street, so those things have to be uh, you know, put on into their bills and and also on the social media, because we try. Even, you know, remember that in twenty nineteen, I did the um, um. A workshop with landlords and tenants and everybody about about cleanup Hawthorne, but they still putting those items on the street. My next issue, it goes to the alleys, uh not, you know, the uh. This is a problem, because the alley is not just an alley, but it's almost like a little street, you know, where. Uh all the uh um Comblum, Yukon, um Phantom, um. All the way to Dory, there is that alley that goes along with the railroad track that have a fence there. I call for people to pick up, you know, our city staff, go and pick up and clean up that alley. But then the next day, there is furniture there. They keep putting trash along that fence constantly, almost every night. So so, you know, even even sometime I feel I feel sorry, you know, just to call uh Agbar or or to to email the public works. To say, there is trash on that alley. So I don't know what can we do, believe it or not, if it was not this law against the uh. Those, what you call them, um?
The robot, what you call them? On the sky, what you call it?
Drones.
The drone?
Yeah, I'm telling you, if I could just put a drone in that alley, constantly monitoring. Who's dumping those, because people just drive and dumping those stuff there. It's not like coming from the apartment buildings.
Yeah.
Uh it's people driving, and then they just, they know that alley, have no camera, no nothing, and it's a big. Uh a long stretch, because it runs all the way from, uh you know, like I said, from uh even past Yukon, right? Your series Yukon, all the way towards our um. Bad against, so they continue to put trash there almost every night. And I don't know what what can we do. So I I and I have to say, uh Alan, thank you, because uh. Last year, you know, we create a program that the city goes around and pick up on the major street, but even, you know, I see that. Um, a lot of the street has been cleaned up faster than before, so you guys are doing the right thing. But the rapid, the rapid things that Miss English talk about, it's good that we will have a rapid respond. And to educate people uh to report those trash on the street, so we need to come up with something, especially on those alleys. Uh because like I said, on that particular alley, you know, it's not, it's not the owner's fault. It's just people driving around, just dumping their their trash, and sometimes even they don't live here in Hawthorne. It it's contractors. That, you know, with their trucks and then they dump stuff, you know, uh they dump, you know, like. You know, betas, mirrors, you know, they take care of, so all those kind of stuff, so. I know Alan, it's no solution, but I would love to to talk to the chief and the and the legal department, put a drum on that alley.
Actually, um, we we are working with the police department of uh implementing uh installing cameras to. Monitor alley area, um so we we will be starting to do that.
All right, fantastic, thank you, appreciate it.
Councilman, Councilwoman?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Real quick, um in the city of Los Angeles, they have uh illegal dumping signs that are put in the alleys. It says, uh, you know, no dumping, illegal, or whatever however you want the language, the verbiage to be. It gives the city's municipal code and it gives the fine, and it says through full prosecution. So folks that are calling in uh on a truck or a uh a construction company that's coming and trying to dump. Uh cement, uh at uh trying to dump materials, the sign right there in the alley will say. Through full full prosecution, so that means that the individual that's reporting the crime, and then there's obviously a camera. Uh needs to be able to uh, um, you know, uh be a witness. Provide information that is helpful so that these folks can be ultimately prosecuted and fined. And that's the only way we're gonna clean uh any city up. Is that if you see some, you see something, you say something and report it, because at the end of the day. Um, these individuals are coming from other cities and dumping whatever it is that they have. Uh to avoid going to the normal uh dump sites, paying the fee that you're supposed to pay to dump. At the dump sites, and this happens every day on our corridors, whether it's Figurora, Grand, MLK, wherever it may be. Even here on our city, uh off the freeways, the highways, uh and on ramps, off ramps. So just an FYI. City attorney, if you could please look into uh making signage and also Alan, public works. Um signage to implement where there's heavy dumping and ongoing hum uh dumping. Um I think that that would be helpful, and just monitor the area with the camera, cuz you could catch the license plate very easy, very easy. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, uh thank you so much. Okay, just real before we before we end. These are the two telephone numbers for the illegal dumping hotline. The first one is directly to Republic Services. And that telephone number is one eight eight eight. Seven four two. Five two three four. Eight eight eight, seven four two. Five two three four. The next number is our own internal one. Are you still manning this one, Alan? Three one oh, three four nine, sixteen thirty four? The next, the next number is the one that is for our staff, which actually goes out there and takes a look. And if they're able to put it inside a truck, they get rid of it, right? So this is for the city of Hawthorne's illegal dumping hotline. It's three one oh. Three four nine. One six three four. Uh three one oh, three four nine, one six three four. And I'm gonna see if Eric Chavez, if you have the opportunity to come up with a graphic. That you can insert kind of towards the end of the meeting at some point, just so that people can see it again, because people heard me. I like for to for people to actually see those numbers. One eight eight eight, seven four two, five two three four. And then the other one is three one oh, three four nine, one six three four. Um and if you're able to, please do, and if there's just some reason, technical reason that you can't do it quick enough. Uh for whatever reason, that's okay, but see if you can. Alright, thanks, guys. Thank you, Alan.
That was good, Mayor. Thanks for getting the numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I I said them two or three times, so people have an opportunity to go grab a pen, you know?
I wrote them down.
Okay, so item twenty two is an update on the housing element progress and discussion of density citing priorities. Uh it's for discussion purposes only, there's no motion required. Go ahead, uh interim city manager Von Norris, introduce wherever you need to, or go ahead and discuss it yourself.
Uh good evening again. I'd like to introduce our interim planning director, Greg McLean. Uh he will give a short update. And we have a consultant online that can assist with additional questions if needed. For sure, Greg.
Thank you. Um good evening, Mayor and um city council members. Uh last time, we had a special meeting before the regular meeting, we ran out of time, um. So I wanted to o- offer an opportunity for the council to um express their um opinions a little bit more. On our strategies, so um just as a reminder. Um we have a a brief presentation, if you want to see it, um from our consultant. Um addressing only the part of the um of the housing element that addresses how we're going to reach our our Rena number. And uh we're going to review the strategies. As you'll remember, we have a Rena number that's a little over seventeen hundred. And the first, the first thing that will count to reduce that number are projects that are already approved. Cuz that's obviously the easiest thing to count. And then, secondly, we'll count vacant residentially uh zone or or commercial misuse projects that are vacant. Or, yeah, because that's low hanging fruit, so when you take that out, um we'll have a lower number that we have to achieve. Or, yeah, because that's low hanging fruit. So when you take that out, um we'll have a lower number that we have to achieve. And so the remaining uh number has to be addressed somehow. We had suggested two strategies because no one strategy is gonna get us to the goal plan. And also remember that we have to have a at least about a fifteen percent buffer to um get this through the state's scrutiny. So uh we'll we'll go over the numbers when the consultants on, because I unfortunately didn't memorize them. Um but one strategy was to look at the downtown Hawthorne specific plan. There's an area on both sides of Hawthorne Boulevard. This north of El Segundo that was already identified as mixed use. It was identified at twenty four units per acre in the original plan. We're suggesting that we up that to thirty because that's the minimum density that the state will accept. As um as feasible for affordable housing. So that's a, that's a strategy that will get us to a certain point. It won't get us all the way there. And the other strategy was to look at um housing overlays over certain areas that are currently zoned commercial. Uh Mayor, you had indicated that um you saw a bit too much in areas that were already dense. And so we went back and we looked at other opportunities where we could. Uh specifically, we looked at El Segundo Boulevard in both the commercial and um industrial areas. We did find a few. So we can, we can start to move things around a little bit and lessen that burden. I I did um plan on bringing a density map. Uh unfortunately, um. The data was not as easy to find as I had hoped. Go ahead.
Um, is this with, you know, I know we have a, I'm not saying that we don't, we shouldn't talk about this at all here, but. Do you think a special study session on this uh with a sufficient amount of time that we can go on for a length of time would be most appropriate? For this discussion?
Unfortunately, there's not enough time to do that at this point.
And can you tell, remind us why?
Well, there's a number of reasons. One um is, one quite honestly has to do with uh the lack of. Of of a um director for the department for a key period of time. So when I came on board about a little bit more than a month ago, I had unfortunately made the the assumption that you had seen this before. And then I was surprised whenever I heard the comments and it was obvious that you hadn't seen it. So um. I I, this should have been brought to you earlier. So we're kind of at the end of the, end of the line here now. But the good news is that this city, unlike a lot of cities, is already, we have a huge inventory of projects that are already approved. That are ready to go. And so that cut takes a big chunk of your RENA out of, out of the way. And that's excellent. And we also have a good number of vacant sites. So our, our job is to, is really to attack a much smaller number. And as I, I know that it doesn't sound plausible, but as was mentioned before, um Hawthorne actually did get away with a very. Um a light RENA allocation compared to the surrounding cities. And so. It's not that difficult of a project to address with the two strata, strategies we have. And um I think that that at this point, we're looking for direction from the council. On where you would like us to focus, the the housing overlays primarily. Uh because um we have time to make some significant adjustments there. Okay? Uh at at this point, it's it's not going to be possible to um do a complete like overhaul of the plan.
Um, I want, I'm sorry, I'm inter, I'm interject.
No, this is designed to be a a discussion.
Yes, so um I know that the October fifteenth uh is when they need to see our draft, our.
Well, that's actually the 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 submittal deadline, yeah.
The submittal deadline.
Yeah.
Is there an opportunity to go back and make changes after that deadline? That in case, the 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 reason I'm concerned is that uh we didn't put out this, put this out to the communities affected. I mean, representatives, whether it's the homeowners associations, uh the the groups that live within that area, other than the homeowners associations. And, yeah, look, I mean, the reality is there are certain areas that always get affected and that's what my concern is. So just. And not allowing them to speak up, whether they support this or they don't. Just kind of seems like we're sidestepping them and then it's setting us up for a lot of disappointed people out there.
I I do understand. And we will be putting this out for public scrutiny um for, at the same time that we send this out. So starting next week, this will go out. There will be opportunities to do a little bit of shuffling. Um but minor changes in in direction are about all we can a- achieve at this point. So, yeah, we'll be able to discuss this in a little bit more detail. Um the state will have, I think it's sixty days to respond to our submittal. And they're gonna have corrections. So when we make those corrections, we can make some additional little tweaks. But unfortunately, that's just about all we can do at this point. But before we submit, though, we have a few days to to make some big changes with the overlay. So I understand that that, looking at the density, I did map them out. I just haven't had a chance to present, present this yet. Um the north part of the city is denser, of course, than the middle part. And we would like to take as much out of there as we can, and we certainly will. But we can't take everything out because a lot of those that you saw, and we'll see that map again. A lot of those that you see are already zoned residential and they're just underutilized or vacant. So it's not like we're targeting them. They're just great opportunities. Okay?
Are you ready to take maybe some questions or do you need to mention anything? We have question from Councilmember English, then Montero, and then Mayor Proton.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Uh, real quick, uh Greg, one, the two hundred and thirty units at Millennium. Uh yes or no? Can they be used to offset our RENA numbers?
They're be, they're counted in the um. Actually, I'm gonna defer to the, to the consultant on that. Um Perry, do you wanna come in?
Hi Greg, uh Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Yes, the the quick answer is yes, they are credited towards the RENA. Uh they're credited towards the RENA for this reason. Because of where the planning cycle began, anything that was under construction. Had building permits issued but hadn't begun construction, or maybe was built but hadn't had its CFOs issued just yet, can be credited towards the RENA. So Millennium, all those two hundred and thirty units. Now, they're they're counted at the above moderate income category and not at uh moderate or or in the lower income categories. But we were able to absorb all those units which brought down our RENA.
Okay, two, the uh properties that have uh already are 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 or are already in the process of being built. Uh one on Imperial. I don't know how many units those are. Those the, I think it's over a hundred. Have those been added? Two, uh the property that's on Rosecrans that hasn't even been built out. How many units is that? I'm just trying to, uh you know, quantify, calculate, how much do we have in 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 our uh pipeline? That would go towards the goal that we're trying to meet. And then just real quick, just real quick, and I think the reason why. Um the state and uh um RENA for us, uh they haven't really pushed as as much. You know, I have to give credit to the mayor. Um, you know, we've, we've been very um. You know, aggressive when it comes to how much housing uh they feel that we need. I understand there's a need, I really do, especially for our low income. Um however, trying to meet this challenge and trying to meet it before the deadline in February. Here in the next week, uh this week, actually, the fifteenth, is just crazy. I just, I just wanna see if we're really, you know, calculating all those.
Sure.
Do you mind if I share my screen?
Go ahead and share, Perry.
Yeah.
Um I would like to also address a part of what um Councilmember English raised said. Uh one of the reasons I believe that that Hawthorne got off with a relatively light number is because um. In the, in the previous cycle, Hawthorne actually built quite a few units. Now, they're not popular, but they did help a lot. Um and I I think that compared to the surrounding cities, which build almost none. Uh I think that that SCAG was was looking very favorably toward Hawthorne in that regard.
And and just to add on that, I went to the meeting in twenty nineteen and I voiced my my strong objection. On those five thousand units that we're going to give to Hawthorne.
Yeah, yeah.
That's when they went back on the second time, they only give us seven seventeen hundred. But I was voiced my opinion. I told them, you guys just wanna dump all these things in our, you know, neighborhood that they're already dense. And I said, why not look for the other cities west of us?
Good job.
So I did that. So, thank you.
That's a factor too. Alright.
Great. Let me do this then, okay?
Mayor Proton, do you have a quick question you can insert while he's setting up? Unmute yourself, please. Unmute yourself, Councilwoman.
Yes, 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 yes. Thank you. Um so, uh Greg, I wanted to ask you about the underutilized. Um commercial area on Hawthorne Boulevard. Is it possible that we can rezone that area?
Oh, which part of Hawthorne Boulevard are you speaking?
Well, I'm speaking about the areas where you have a number of. Uh n- not, I I think it probably is south of one thirty sixth street.
Right. Um that would be, that would be.
South Bay Ford.
I'm not talking about that side of the street, actually. I'm talking about the west side of the street.
Yeah, that would be a significant policy change. You could, but that would have to come from you guys.
So I mean, if we, if we, because, okay, I'm I'm thinking maybe we could rezone it for mixed use. Do you have, do you have an opinion as to whether that would be a good idea? Because I think. That's something that the South Bay Council of Government has talked about a lot. Changing the zoning to mixed use where you have underutilized commercial properties.
Yeah, um I, I think it could be a good idea. Uh if you wanted to count it toward RENA. Like, for example, in your next cycle, you'd have to be looking at at least thirty units to the acre. And the problem is you have a lot of very small lots there. But what's working to your advantage is you have a lot of um vacancies. And opportunities to consolidate properties are good right now. I don't know what they're going to be in eight years. So if if in eight years, when you're coming to this point again, or let's say in seven years. If the situation has not improved, I would look at that very carefully. Cause one of the ways of improving the condition of the uh commercial businesses in the area would be to reduce the um. The reduce the the quantity of commercial space. I mean, there's a supply and demand. You're oversupplied on commercial, I think. And if you could, if you could uh do some mixed use that would take some of that. Um commercial space out, replace it with, say, driveways and stuff to get into the parking lots. Um it might help, but it would require a lot of consolidation.
You're saying it's too late to do it for this cycle?
For this, for this round, it's too late. But that's why, that's why South Bay Ford was the only site south of El Segundo Boulevard that was identified. Because it was already consolidated when we did the specific plan.
Let's uh move on to Perry's uh discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you, so can, can the screen be seen by everyone?
Yes.
So it to, to to Greg's point about the, the RENA from the fifth cycle, by the way, I've just, off the top of my head, if I recall, the city had arena allocation. Of something in the neighborhood of six hundred and thirty units. The city produced about eight hundred and thirty units. So you actually exceeded what the um, what you were required to produce in the previous cycle. So for the sixth cycle, which is this period from twenty twenty one through twenty twenty nine, as Greg also alluded to. Every city in in California, not just in the Southern California uh SCAG region. Received something in the neighborhood of three to four times what they were used to receiving over the past couple of housing element cycles. So Ha, so Hawthorne is is not alone in in the surprise with the number. But to start with, um your, your RENA breaks down as follows. Um if you recall, it it it's broken down into income categories. And so um there's a good many housing units that are in the above moderate or market rate income category. But there's also a a good number that's uh in the um, the lower income categories. So this is our starting point. Um then when we start to talk about credits towards the RENA, we look at a couple of different things. We look at those projects like Millennium South Bay that are under construction or or near nearly finished construction. And um we're able to to credit those towards our RENA. And uh so you can see that um Millennium South Bay, the 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 project at Rosecrans and Corn Bloom. I'm not sure that it has a name, but that project is also credited towards the RENA. There's um a hundred units that are there. The the project on Imperial Highway, I think it may have been counted towards the the previous cycle, if I'm not mistaken. It's uh, there's, there's not a hundred unit projects um that I'm aware of that's under construction right now on Imperial.
Thirty six, thirty six Imperial Highway, I think, isn't it?
I believe that was counted in the previous cycle.
Okay, yeah. But there is, there are projects as well. We get to count projects that are entitled, but not yet under construction. So the the Permanent Support of Housing for Veterans, that's eight, an eighteen unit project that gets counted and credited towards the RENA. And the other numbers that we are able to use are these projections for uh accessory dwelling units. And um eh how we calculate these projections, there's, we look at the uh, the the ADUs, as they're called. What's been built over the past three years, and then we do sort of a straight line projection over the next eight years. And we arrive at this uh, this number for eighty years. And so those are credited towards our RENA as well. And so what we, what we're left with is a, I'm sorry, let me go. Let me go back. What we're left with then, we started off with uh seventeen hundred and thirty four units. When we take into all these, all these credits into accounts, where we still need to accommodate um one thousand one hundred and forty five uh units. And that's when we start to go looking for opportunity sites in the city. And as Greg mentioned, the first thing we do, of course, is we look at what's available out there in terms of vacant land. Uh properties that are already zoned, residential, mixed use. Um it, I mean, no surprise, Hawthorne is a, is a built out city, so there isn't a lot in a way that is available. And that's across the board throughout the city. And so. Those units, what we, you know, think of as this sort of low hanging fruit, that only gets us so far. Uh and when we've looked at these sites, we we arrive at at a potential um capacity of two hundred and fifty three units. That can be applied towards that RENA. So we're still short, just under a thousand units that need to be accommodated. And so that's where we need to look at other avenues for for meeting this RENA. Now. This is a painful process. And in some, some cities are experiencing more pain than others. You know, Garden Grove, for example, they have to accommodate nineteen thousand units. Your neighbor Gardena, they have to acca- uh accommodate five thousand units. We, you know, our approach, staff and and us as consultants, we wanted to make this as as least painful for the city as possible. And so, you know, part of our program was that um we would look at a couple of things. One being this, you know, this slight increase in in density in an area that's already designed. For uh to accommodate high density residential development in a specific plan that was adopted only in twenty sixteen. Which identified a whole new mixed use district in uh the downtown Hawthorne specific plan area. Now, we could, we could look at those uh, those units without making any adjustments at all. They allow for twenty four dwelling units per acre on these mixed use sites. And there are sites that are in that area that are, that are, that are perfectly suitable.
Perry, before you move on, um I think it's important that we specify that what we're looking at in this diagram is, are those sites that are orange. We're not looking at the bright red on the left and we're not looking at the pink to the, to the right. And we're not looking at the yellow, of course. The yellow or the single family neighborhood surrounding. So just, just that orange part. Which is between the railroad tracks and north, which is to the left, up to uh, what is that street? I forgot, one hundred and sixteen street?
I think that's right.
Just that one segment. It's one block east and one block west of uh Hawthorne Boulevard. Yeah, right there. That's, that's all we're talking about, increasing the density, um just to be clear. Okay?
Right.
Well, why, maybe it's time to start looking on the west side of the freeway. I think we're looking so much on this side of the freeway.
Yeah, yeah, but let's uh, Perry, can you go back though, just to.
I need you to start talking about that because.
Yeah.
East side of the freeway, okay?
I I think you're, you're, it's a good point, but the reason why we picked this is because it, well, I shouldn't say we, because I wasn't here when this decision was made. But I would support this decision because this is already zoned residential. And it's already, excuse me, residential mixed use. And it's so close. Um it's, it's already been tw- when did we adopt this? It was done in like two thousand and seventeen or something? I forgot.
Earlier.
It was a while ago.
Yeah, sixteen.
Sixteen?
Yeah.
Yeah. Of course, I was here when it happened and um it's been a while and and there hasn't been any, there hasn't really been anyone taking advantage of it. So as a, as a planner, I would look at it and say, hmm. So as a, as a planner, I would look at it and say, hmm, um, there's something not quite right. If nobody's taking advantage of it, we would have to, we'd have to look at it and see what's, what's going on. And something's not working for the developers or not working for the property owners. And most likely it's that it's just slightly under density for them to pencil it out. So going to thirty is a very small change that might make the big difference, that might start the catalytic process to convert these into the nice new mixed use projects that was envisioned when this, when this specific plan was adopted. And I, I would recommend that we do this, not more than thirty, take it incrementally, step by step. But go to thirty for now, because that's an easy way to get the credits that you need to, um, get this through the housing element process. And leave it there for a few years, see what happens. Perry, how many do we get by doing that?
Sure, so. If we make that adjustment to thirty dwelling units per acre, then that has a capacity, based on the sites that we've, we've, we've found in the mixed use district, and, and that includes, that it does include the Hawthorne Mall site, which I will add, is, it's identified as a transformative project in the downtown Hawthorne specific plan. So one that will kind of transform the, the, uh, the city center. And that, I will say that that project or that space alone, uh, it produces a, a, a very big chunk of your, um, of your Rena, uh, not just in, in this, in this area, but in, just, just in general. And because of the size of the site, we can accommodate units across all income categories, above moderate, moderate. You know, and even in the lower income categories. But if we make that adjustment to thirty dwelling units per acre, that gives us seven hundred and nine units. So the two hundred and ninety-three or so that were from the things that are the vacant and underutilized land that is existing, plus this seven hundred, you know, puts us around, you know, just around a thousand units. So there's still a little bit left that we need to close the gap, right? So here it is, so I've, we've got two hundred and fifty-three vacant, underutilized that are existing. Seven hundred and nine, if we make that tweak to the downtown Hawthorne specific plan, we still have a shortfall of a hundred and eighty-three units. This is the gap that we have to close with, with what would be the third part of our, of our, of our strategy. And that being the housing overlay. So, you know, the map that I'm going to show you, this is, this is just for discussion purposes right now. Okay, so we've, um, what we're identifying on this map are, um, uh, the sites that are in the mixed use zone, this, these are the sites that would get the, go from twenty-four dwelling units per acre to thirty dwelling units per acre. The red being sites that are currently vacant or underutilized, that we don't have to do anything, anything to. And so then the yellow would be what we would call this housing overlay, and what the housing overlay would allow. It would keep the existing zoning, that would be the underlying zoning, so if it's zoned commercial, you can still develop it as commercial. But it would allow, but it would, there'd be this layer that would be on top of it, that would allow for, uh, residential construction.
Perry, let me interrupt at this moment. I know that some of you are recognizing sites that are completely unreasonable already. And, um, I assure you, they've already been taken out of the, out of the mix, and that creates another problem. So I, I think you'll see that, um, there's a car dealership, there's a church, there's a behavioral health services in there. I've identified these and taken them out, okay? So all of the unreasonable, the impossible sites are gone, so you don't have to point them out. But that actually, um, increased the need for more sites by doing that, okay? So, um, I just wanted to make that clear, this is not the final map. This is the map that was made for the last meeting and hasn't been updated yet, okay? So if you see things that are, that are clearly not possible for housing, that's already been taken care of.
Yes, thank you for that clarity, Greg. And I think the point that I wanted to make too is that we are looking to sort of spread the burden, if you will, uh, uh, across the city. Now, what Greg had indicated too, based on the conversations that he's had with some council members, is that, so, we, we also have looked at sites on El Segundo Boulevard, uh, sites that are in the, uh, the industrial areas on the, uh, the east end of the city. And so we've identified a, a few more sites. You know, what we have found is that the sites that we've identified are generally almost just making up for the sites that we ended up losing, based on, you know, what Greg just said about sites that were, are not realistic. So we're, we're, we're kind of back to square one a little bit. But the, the point I think I wanted to make with this map is that we are trying to distribute this across the city. The, the difference between this housing element cycle and housing element cycles in the past. Previously, what this, what all cities could do really, is that you could have just said that, hey, we're gonna throw over a mixed use overlay in this area of the city that has a hundred parcels. And we'll just do a, a simple calculation, just identifying how much area that is, uh, what does the, the zoning allow? And there you are, HCD, this will be our, um, the capacity that the city will be able to provide for this housing element cycle. But for this sixth cycle of, uh, the housing element update, HCD is, is really scrutinizing the sites. And so the sites that we identify, there has to be this realistic possibility that the sites could be developed over the course of the next eight years. So we look at sites that are, that are considered underutilized. We look at the, the value of the improvements on the land compared to the land itself. We look at ownership patterns, so that if sites are going to be assembled, do they at least have the same owner? Uh, we look at the size of the sites as well, can't be too small, can't be too big. So these are the factors that we look at, and it really narrows down the, um, the sites that are, um, that are possible. And that will, will make their way through HCD's scrutiny. So it's a little bit more of a challenging, uh, housing element cycle. But I think that, you know, the, with these measures, this sort of three-step approach, we can get there, and we can get there with the little bit of a buffer that Greg was talking about earlier. We'd love to have at least, you know, demonstrate that we can produce fifteen percent more units than we're required to. Because as HCD reviews these, uh, our housing element, they might strike units or strike sites as being unrealistic. So we're, um, we're very close in terms of the numbers. But that's, you know, this is why we want to have council's input on, on, uh, on these sites and, and on the strategy that we're proposing.
Yeah, but we can't make any comments because we don't have the updated map.
Yeah, you can, I'm sorry, sorry, um, House Member Montero. Comments can be made, because we have a few days to, to, um, look in areas that we haven't thought of. You know the city better than us, and if you know of places that you think that we could find opportunities for housing, please direct us there.
So again, I'm right, right off the top of the bat, I mean, there's an uneven distribution in the north part of Hawthorne. I mean, these are like recently identified sites that you might have had. You got the corridor along South Prairie Avenue, which are some of the, those are utilized. Those, there's businesses in this place, I don't know how you're defining underutilized. But these have businesses, including one of our former council member colleagues, uh, parking, uh, used parking, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, used car lot, and then you got.
That's one I took out, that's not actually a feasible site in the eyes of HCD. But you're suggesting that we go back to Prairie Avenue and take a very closer look at that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And Imperial Highway along there, we have residents that live along those sites. And like I said, there is, there's no distribution in the west side of Hawthorne, across the, on the west side of the four oh five.
I, I get that, but honestly, if we were to look over there, would be, we'd be looking at replacing schools, parks, or, or what? There's not a lot of opportunity.
You have Rosecrans corridor from the four oh five all the way up to Aviation, maybe it's time to start doing it. We need to spread the responsibility to all the rest of the, the rest of the, the, you know, the, the community.
We'll take a look at that.
And then we, you know, we can go to some of those industrial areas that we mentioned. Yeah, go ahead, council member, and then, uh, councilwoman English.
Thank you.
I would, I would, uh, take the recommendation that Greg and, and the other gentleman is doing about, uh, the downtown specific plan to go from two, twenty-four to thirty unit. And also, uh, uh, Greg, I don't know if, if you guys look, there, there is a parcel that is about four acres that is on almost, uh, on Hawthorne Boulevard and past Imperial. Uh, right there on the, uh, on the green line.
Right, I know which one you mean.
You guys took that in consideration?
No, we, you know what, we didn't, because that area is, uh, is zoned for hospitality and hotels.
No, not that, not that section. If, if there is, there is a land that is behind the McDonald's and, and that the Dialis place.
Yeah.
That is right on top of the one oh five. Goes down.
The one with the bridge?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, that's a good site, we should include that.
Yeah, because it's four acres.
Yeah, good, good point, thank you.
Okay, uh, councilwoman?
Yeah, I, I, I'm sitting here and laughing, uh, mayor, just, just in history, back in two thousand and nine, uh, two thousand and nine, when I first came on the council, I had talked about, uh, changing the overlay along Imperial, uh, corridor to include mixed use. I also was, uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I, that was back then, however, you know. You know, they, folks didn't like it, they wanted to recall me, that's neither here nor there. Anyway, here we are, fast forward twenty twenty-one, and we're looking for housing, isn't that amazing? We, um, I love the fact that, uh, mixed use is something that we should be entertaining more. I like the fact that we're looking to possibly the downtown area, that's my hope. Um, if we want to spread the love throughout the city, we need to make it more of, uh, of a community that is, um, business, home friendly, you know, with the mixed use component, you know, shopping down below, living up above. Even the work live, uh, where you live and you work, in the same building is very popular. But if anybody needs to see this and know that we're pressed for housing and have an urgency, we need to show the planning department, uh, planning commission. So please, uh, bring this upon the planning commission and let them know the importance here.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Because time and time again throughout the years, in history has it, when there's, uh, projects that come to the city, often time, they're not even uh, made out the door of the planning commission. It's a, no, so that needs to stop at some point. And I'm not trying to say that they're, uh, because they're not good projects. Uh, we want good housing, okay, that's a given, we want good housing. And if folks are looking to build here in Hawthorne, we should allow them that opportunity to at least entertain what the proposal or the project looks like. And if it falls within the needs of having to meet our housing requirements, and then by all means. But at the same time, the mayor is right, we should look in other areas, uh, you know, that includes, um, again, further down from, uh, the one twentieth, possibly into the, the downtown area up to Rosecrans. And then, um, obviously the Rosecrans area, however, you know, some of these might be required to change the zoning there to accommodate that type of housing, whether it be a work live or whether it be a mixed use, all of that's important. And the increasing of the housing, um, in the area that you just made mention to thirty, I could agree with that, I could agree with that. But at the same time, uh, we need to be able to have, uh, uh, you know, those accommodation to those, uh, residents that could afford those types of developments, those types of housing. And so we want to make sure that those folks looking to build here in Hawthorne know that they have to be able to accommodate all levels of housing. Including our low income, and, um, it's unfortunate because of the, you know, um, expiration of rental assistance and why not, there's gonna be additional folks coming, uh, you know, becoming, uh, becoming homeless. So we really need to tackle this and address all the needs, uh, very important. And then the property that was mentioned over, um, off of Imperial, on, um, uh, Hawthorne Boulevard adjacent to, uh, the DeVitas, uh, Dialis's center is a good, uh, area.
Yeah.
It's a very good area, and then across the street from that is another good area. In that corner of Pollo Loco, um, down that, uh, area is, is a good area to, to consider. There's restaurants, um, there's some housing, not a whole lot, because it butts the one oh five freeway. Uh, however, all of that's important, and then even below that, uh, one oh five freeway, that's, uh, off of, uh, El Segundo, excuse me, off of, um, Hawthorne Boulevard, it's, it's actually Imperial, Imperial, that goes further out, almost up to La Saniga. Take a look at there, that's important. It's right off of a freeway, entering on a freeway, I should say, entering onto the four oh five freeway. But, uh, yeah, thank you for that, good work, uh, also to the consultant, I don't see your face there anymore, but thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, councilmember.
All right, Patterson?
Let me unmute, um, I just want to express some support to some, some ideas that were expressed that makes sense, right? You know, we're in a tough situation, I agree with everybody, like, our density is insane, and it's kind of odd, we have to kind of fight to create more, uh, but I think it does make sense to, uh, that, that location I was identified on, uh, Imperial and what's that, uh, Hawthorne Boulevard, that makes a lot of sense. Like Mayor Protem said, uh, maybe converting some of that commercial to Hawthorne Boulevard to mixed use, I think that makes some sense, and increasing the density that you already had stated from twenty-four to thirty units per acre, makes a lot of sense as well. Um, and, and as, uh, uh, Councilwoman Grace English, uh, stated, and, and I know this is something that, uh, the mayor Protem has championed in the past. I, I don't know, does, um, providing for live, live work opportunities, does that help in, in meeting these, these Rena numbers?
Yes, it does.
And so I know, uh, the mayor Protem had talked a lot about doing that in our, uh, commercial area. I don't know if that, you know, i- if, if there's more opportunities for that, uh, in that area. Uh, not the commercial area, she's our industrial, uh, industrial area.
Yeah, now keep in mind, we, we'll make what we need to, um, do for the housing element to, to get it in. But any changes that it makes sense for Hawthorne can be made after the housing element's done. And if it, if it gets us to our Rena, we can, you know, go back on some of these other things afterwards. That's okay, as long as we're hitting all of the, all of our levels of income. So if live work is helping us to get to our low income, then that would be a really good program. And we don't have to identify it in the housing element right up front, we can amend it later and put that in. So to make up for the lack of, of all of the, um, initial input that should have gone into this project, we can review this a year or two from now, and look at putting new programs in that, you know, and then just resubmit it for, for their approval. All of these ideas are really good, and I think that, that, that site up on the north part of the city, right at the freeway, is going to help tremendously, and we may be in a good position to, um, you know, to look at taking some of the burden off of other areas. I'll let everybody finish and then I'll, then I'll move on, so if, uh, Councilman Patterson, do you have more?
Hey, one, one other thing, though, in looking at, uh, looking at the map, uh, the area that's around where Earth Cafe is, um, I mean, it's pretty built out over there though, but just in general, there, there isn't much, much residential opportunities close to all that great commercial development, and I know a lot of the future of commercial development, retail development is, is mixed use. And I was doing that over at the, uh, South Bay Galleria.
Yeah.
And so I don't know if, um, if it makes any sense to allow some residential over there, um, you know, amongst all that commercial.
Well, hearing the comments, I, I was thinking that perhaps on the, on the north side of Rosecrans, in that area, maybe, something. But now you, you've got me thinking, maybe we should be looking at both sides of Rosecrans on that, that area. So we'll take a look.
Thanks. Uh, real quick, so I'd like you to go all the way up to Aviation and Rosecrans and look for opportunities there.
Yeah, yeah, we, we will, absolutely.
Um, actually, some of the, and, and I'm not just saying it, just to say it, but there have been some of the building, oh, some of the building owners over there have been interested in, uh, building, uh, some mixed use too. They're selling it or developing it, so I think it's worthwhile looking at some of those areas as well.
The ones off of Aviation?
Um, yeah.
And one forty-seven.
Okay.
No, 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 wait, hold on. That's not what I'm talking about, that's another one. Uh, I'm talking literally on Rosecrans leading up from the four oh five all the way up to Aviation, and then along the Aviation corridor as well. So, uh, if you could take a look at there, but, uh, councilmember Montero. But uh, councilmember Montero is right, he's, he's suggesting something, a slightly different area, which is further down on one forty-seventh, right?
Yeah, going south.
Going south.
One forty-seven, yeah, Aviation one forty-seven, because. There could be some buildings there that can turn into the mixed use.
Okay, I know we've identified them in the past, so we'll, we'll take a look there again.
Thank you, Greg.
Okay.
Real quick, what about that, that site, uh, that, oh, was it FAA site?
Oh, I think that one has other considerations, so the building may even be historical now, so. Probably not realistic in this, in this round.
Uh, let me ask the consultant a quick question, i- i- is the um, you know, in the past, you know, we used to do these housing elements. To satisfy the, 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 the state about the arena number. And, but then, a lot, like you said, a lot of cities then didn't build nothing. They just submit their housing element, they're doing, they don't do nothing, so are, are they now coming down with forks and knife and chop?
Well, i- i- in a way, yes, they, I mean, the, the, so let me just say this first of all, is that what we need to do as, as a city is. Kind of set the table for development to occur, alright? Now, we're gonna identify these sites, and we're gonna identify where almost twelve hundred u- units could theoretically be, be built. But it's, the, the city doesn't have to ensure that they get built, right, we just have to make sure that there's resources available, that there's land. That there's programs, that there's zoning that can make it happen. Um, you know, the, the other thing that I, I want to say is that, when we. I mean, you'll notice that I said, hey, if we, if we do this to these mixed, in this mixed use district, we can get seven hundred units, right? And when I made those calculations, I, I, I made very conservative calculations based on development that has occurred in the city. So even though your zoning might allow X amount of units. I only looked at seventy-five percent of what the zoning would allow, right, because there's. We're not exactly sure what would happen on these sites, there's things that you have to take into consideration when you're developing. And so, on some sites you might get more, on some sites you might get less. And the other thing that I would say is that, you know, the market is going to do what the market does. And just because we've identified these sites as quote-unquote opportunity sites. There might be other sites that get recycled, right, there, there might be another Millennium South Bay that, that occurs in the city that we're, that we're not aware of. That somebody, you know, developer, uh, uh, takes an interest in and invests in, and then suddenly you have another great development in the city. So we're just, like I say, we're just setting the table for this to happen, and development will, will take its course over this uh, eight-year period.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Perry.
Real quick, just one more.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's try to finish up, guys, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, right now, right now, I'm gonna finish, Greg, please take this uh, this information down. Across the street from the animal shelter here in Hawthorne, is that uh, city manager, is that you, uh, Yukon?
Yukon, yes.
Yukon, I think it's one three seven hundred?
Yes, that's correct.
One three seven hundred Yukon, please look at that property, call the owner and tell him to do something with that.
If that's a vacant site, we've already looked at it, and, and it'll be included.
It's very vacant, and very disgusting.
We're, yes.
We're not gonna, we're not, we're not gonna show.
Have a sale, they have a sale sign on it.
Oh, it, it's horrible, it's horrible, okay, thank you.
We're not gonna extend this conversation by showing you additional sites that we found, but we have found a couple. On El Segundo Boulevard that will get us even closer, just rest assured that we've, we've found some more too, with. With that and what we've heard today. I think we're gonna be okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Brad, thank you, Mr. Barry.
Mr. McLean? Do we have any point, after we submit this, to get some uh, community input?
Oh yeah, absolutely, this is gonna be um, put out there for community comment next week, right Perry?
Well, the, so what'll happen is we'll get, we're going to get this document submitted to HCD, the, the public review period is going to run in tandem. So Greg and uh, in staff and I, we're going to set a, um, this will be available on the city's website. We're also going to be, there's going to be an open house, uh, and the format right now, I think, is that it's going to be virtual. We haven't landed on the date just yet, but we suspect that it'll happen in late October, early November. So during this planning period, we'll have, you know, an open house, the community can join us, we'll answer questions. So there will be time for the community to uh, to, to provide input. And, you know, the, the, the goal is to have this document adopted by the city by February, uh, the eleventh, twenty twenty-two. So there's, there's a stretch of time for uh, public, more public comment to occur, for some back and forth to occur. And for us to get uh, you know, a, a document that, that everyone's satisfied with.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate that, that's uh, a little bit, that's a bit of a relief. So that they get a chance to see how this affects their neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Or, you know, there's other areas that might have an opinion of other people's neighborhoods, so. They never get affected, but okay, thank you so much. Um, yeah, so that was just a discussion, there was no motion required, thank you, thank you Perry. Item number, item number twenty-three, if we can move along a little bit more efficiently. Is the one hundredth anniversary of Hawthorne in twenty twenty-two, Citywide Centennial Committee. Vaughn, can you give us a brief uh, quick?
Absolutely.
Discussion on that, I mean, nothing elaborate's needed.
No, no, I'll, I'll make it quick, quick as possible, uh, this agenda item is uh, basically city manager asking uh, for. City Council's approval to form a committee, uh, that will work on the centennial uh, celebration event. Uh, I'm asking uh, for a budget not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Uh, requesting one uh, individual employee from each department, um, and for the, the committee to meet. Uh, first meeting to be November December, in expectations of creating a, a format of what we uh. Format for the events that we uh, intend to celebrate in July twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Do you feel comfortable as the interim city manager, uh, a- as a city manager at the moment? That we have the budget for that, and that it's not going to impact our, our coffers in a negative manner?
I, I do feel very confident, uh, fifty thousand dollars allocated for this event will not hurt us financially.
I'd be willing to support that because this is an important event, um, if, opinions from my Mayor Pro Tem, go ahead.
Yes, I support it uh, completely, and I also wanted to suggest that we involve the Hawthorne Historical Society. And um, the, the homeowner associations to the extent possible in this committee. Because I think they all, many of them are, you know, have, have, have. Deep roots in the community of Hawthorne, and they should be involved in planning the centennial. And I, and, and I would also like to be a part of this committee.
I think we all want to be part of it, I mean, I've been living here since seventy, seventy-one and stuff, so, you know. Seen a lot of things change, and I'm excited, I'm excited about it, whoever makes up this committee, I'll be giving my feedback to, it doesn't matter.
Thirty-five years.
So, um, is everybody in concurrence?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please, in support of this.
Alright, Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rais English?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and Councilmembers voting yes.
Okay, thank you, even though there wasn't a vote required, we just did that just so everybody can see that we're all in support of it unanimously. Next is the item number twenty-four, which is the city manager's consent calendar. Uh, Mr. Interim City Manager, the agenda reflects that you have items twenty-five to twenty-eight on the consent calendar. Uh, please proceed by introducing each of the item into the record.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, I have four items for your approval. Agreement, item twenty-five, agreement between the City of Hawthorne and Harrison Associates for various affordable housing advisory services. And appropriate of appropriation of twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars from the accessory agent. Twenty percent uh, aside fund. Item twenty-six, construction of speedy humps on La Moli Avenue between one thirty-fifth Street and Rosecrans Avenue. Item twenty-seven, contract service of Vital Services LLC for Hawthorne Police Department. Lastly, I have item twenty-eight, progress payment number one in the amount of one million, one thousand ninety-eight. One hundred fifty-three dollars and zero cents due to Excel Paving Company of Long Beach, California for municipal. Airport Hawthorne, California, rehabilitation of taxiway project, project number twenty-one dash zero two for your approval.
Move to approve.
Um, the, the motion's gonna go to Councilmember Montero, um, so roll call vote, please.
He didn't make the motion, he seconded it.
You made the motion, the second goes to Councilmember Montero.
Yes.
That was my turn, Mayor Pro Tem.
I, I like the attitude, Mayor Pro Tem, I like it.
Mr. Mayor, like, just me, just, let me comment on twenty-six, I want to thank um.
Yes, sir.
Alan in the Public Works to, to expedite these speed humps on uh, La Moli. And, and be, uh, and because there's been a lot of um, incidents there, you know, traffic, um. Traffic incidents and even deaths uh, that have occurred, so thank you very much for expedite these uh, speed humps on uh. On La Moli between one thirty-fifth and Rosecrans Avenue, thank you.
Okay, thank you for the comments, uh, we concur as well.
Kudos.
Um, it's been, a motion was made by Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Valentine, and the second was given to the Councilmember Montero. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rais English?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The ro- vote reflects Mayor, Councilmembers voting yes.
Okay, Mr. Ed, thank you, Mr. Interim City Attorney, please proceed with introducing your um, single item into the record.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, we have just one item on the city attorney consent calendar, and that's, we're asking for approval of a settlement. On, for three plaintiffs, Alex Jaime, uh, Autec Gracia Aguilar, Jacqueline Aguilar. For total amount of twenty-two thousand dollars.
Aguirre, or Aguilar? Aguirre, okay.
I apologize, sorry.
Oh yeah, I mean, because if they're hearing this, you know. And since we're approving, I'll make a motion to take your recommendation.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rais English?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and Councilmembers voting yes.
Okay, let's move on to item thirty-two, uh, go ahead, Councilmember Rais English, uh, presentation.
Oui, it's been a long day. First of all, uh, we brought Angel City Football Club to the council two weeks ago. And provided information to them with regards to its potential partnership with the city. Uh, there was no questions posed, however, this evening, I hope that that will change. Uh, I do hope that uh, questions will be uh, asked and uh, those answered. Uh, I do know that, along with that, uh, the city manager provided. Uh, a parking lot usage that everybody should have received on their desk, and with that, let me introduce Angel City's Football Club. Let me introduce Carrie, hello Julie, hello Owen, uh, if you could go ahead and proceed with um, again, presentation, thank you.
So first, well, um, so thrilled to be back here again, to talk to you more about bringing Angel City to Hawthorne, and we're even more excited about Hawthorne becoming our home. So I want to thank the Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members, and other leaders of the community for allowing us the opportunity to present today. Um, with me, Carrie, who you know is our chief of staff, but also Angela Hukle's. Mangano, who heads up player development and logistics, as well as Catherine Davila, who heads up community for us, so she could share more about the community impact and the programs that we're going to put together. And lastly, Owen, who brought us all together, so we couldn't be more thrilled to be on the call today. Um, we wanted to start, kind of the same way we started last time, um, which is to show you a video of what we've accomplished. So far this year, um, up until this year, we do a lot with Angel Cities, especially as it relates to community and impact. Um, and we've had some incredible um, experiences in the last month alone, um, with one of our partners, Sprouts, and we were building gardens and. Some schools, and so we just wanted to share some of what we've accomplished together, give you an idea of what we can do with you in Hawthorne.
I promise, guys, it's short, and it'll be a nice little eight forty-five wake-up here.
We at Angel City Football Club are thinking differently about football. We say we want to be champions on the field as much as we want to be champions off the field, and that started from day one.
This is about the different supporter groups that have already been established.
You're gonna see our team and our amazing supporters make as much impact as we can in the community.
It was really just about connecting in an authentic way, meeting people where they are, and how we can have a meaningful relationship with them.
I've learned, no matter what, with a lot of practice, I can achieve anything.
I'm Anya Aluko, the first sporting director of Angel City Football Club.
We are here for you all, the fans, and can't wait to see you out there on the pitch in twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two, baby.
Just a little, and then I'll pass it over, I think, to, to Ange, I believe. Thanks, everyone, since the club was announced in July twenty twenty, we have been thrilled with the positive attention. That Angel City has garnered, and this is the type of attention we'd love to bring to the city of Hawthorne. Everything from the announcement of our first ever sporting director, Anyela Aluko, which received international media attention. To the brand-new launch of our crest and our colors, and the meaning and significance behind that as well. The type of media attention that we've garnered, uh, you can see in this slide, over a hundred twenty-three news articles. A reach of a hundred seventy-eight million and one point six million, over one point six mil- million dollars in earned media value.
Right, so um, Carrie, if you go back one slide, I think, but the point is, with that incredible platform. Um, the most amazing thing perhaps about Angel City is the fact that impact is woven into our DNA. Um, and the fact that ten percent of every dollar that comes in from sponsorships goes directly into community programming, you can see. Our twelve um, current sponsors, corporate partners, um, that number is growing every minute, it feels like. Um, and that means that hundreds of thousands of dollars are going back into our community. Um, I won't go through every single uh, program here, but if we look um, to the next slide in a little more detail. You can see that what started as a drive on our part to get kids playing sport and keep them playing sport. Has really been transformed by our, listening to our community and hearing what the needs really are, that there are needs that need to be met. That, you know, before a kid can even step on a pitch, step on a court, jump in a pool. There are needs that they, they need met, and that has become our mission, is to go deep into our community. Um, and to deliver over forty thousand meals, there's gonna be another forty thousand meals delivered before the end of the year. Um, to create pathways for girls in sport, um, to develop nutrition programs for kids. Um, all of those things are part of what we do, in addition to the impact work, you know. Every month, every quarter, we are also engaging with our community um, to celebrate. And to work with local businesses, to work with the community, to create pride around what we're doing. Um, and so you can see, this is, this is a little sample of what we've done just in Q three of this year. We have so much more to come, um, in the final quarter of this year, we can look forward to creating coaching pathways with sponsored. Sponsors, continuing school garden builds and nutrition programs, launching youth clinics. And before the end of the year, delivering more than fifteen thousand sports bras to girls in need. Um, this, again, in addition to all of the cultural work that we're doing, work in arts and all of that, that, that comes at the intersection. Um, of sports and entertainment, and what it means to be a sports team in Los Angeles. Um, and of course, that means, you know, wherever we are, because our mission is. To put deep roots into our community and to have an effect in the places that we really are. That, if we can make Hawthorne our home, um, and I'd like to, you know, let Carrie share a little bit more about what that means. Um, but there's a lot that we would love to do within the Hawthorne community.
Yeah, with that being said, thanks, Kat, I, we have talked about it a lot internally, and, and obviously Hawthorne is a place that, that we love. No matter what happens, but I, regardless, we'd really love to earmark about at least a quarter million dollars for uh, whatever local community we're in. Uh, for the practice facility moving forward, so super excited to see what that could do in Hawthorne, I'm. And just so many different organizations we've been following, you guys participated in, and even just listening today on the call, it sounds like there's a lot of really great things happening and, and some stuff that. Hopefully we could help with, but we are super excited to, to get to share that we got that approved.
Um, real quick, um, thank you Carrie for that, I know all of our council colleagues have a uh, proposal.
Oh, yeah.
That uh, was delivered to them, I hope that they had an opportunity to review that and see all the impacts. And the benefits that this program will offer to the community of Hawthorne, especially families and children. It also addresses the community benefits in ways that uh, are, are just, you know, beyond words. I say that literally because at the end of the day, this is a fifteen million dollar project. That ultimately is uh, looking to be built here in Hawthorne, it's a community um. Training, it should be a community training facility, and for folks that don't understand that, um. This is the first women's soccer team here in Los Angeles, they're the first team, uh. They're the first team, uh, that is now in the process of, of showcasing in, in June of twenty-two, but more importantly, they need a training facility. The games are gonna be played downtown at, at Bank of California. However, the state, the, the training facility is where all the training's gonna happen. And I want Angela, if you will, please, just to speak a little bit on what this training facility, uh, it looks like, if you would, please.
Sure, I think it really, it's the home of our team and our club and our organization, a, a place in which we will house our first-team players, staff, um, uh, all of, all of our headquarters and organization. And so this is the place that our players will actually spend their, the most time. Uh, and so to be able to call the city of Hawthorne their home is something that, um, is quite appealing. And what we're looking at too with this potential partnership is not just the park itself, but we really see that this partnership can make an investment within the community as well. One of the things that I specifically oversee is housing for our players. So, one of the, um, ideas that we have is we'd love to have our players, our coaching staff in the neighborhoods and the surrounding community of Hawthorne. Uh, we really think that this will be a way to help drive revenue to the city. Uh, in addition to that, we also host, um, the, the teams that compete and travel to compete against our team, and will need to put them up in hotels and housing and accommodations as well. Uh, I think additionally, the, the last component in that last bullet, you'll see, um, when teams come from, to see the LAFC and Galaxy Games, to have the type of high-class facility uh, in this location will be another opportunity to really contribute to the, uh, to the community, as well as have an additional, um, facility to rent and also contribute more to the community in terms of that investment as well.
Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you, ladies. Uh, thank you, uh, for presenting. Um, and, uh, I really appreciate your interest in the city of Hawthorne. And just to kind of, something you guys didn't mention, and you guys, I mean, I wanted to hear something like this, but, I mean, is that the city of Hawthorne was, was the home of AYSO headquarters from nineteen sixty-four up to twenty-eleven. So, just like about ten years ago, they left and moved over to like, uh, Harbor Gateway near Torrance. But this was the headquarters for AYSO, and it's no surprise, uh, you guys have been taking a look at Hawthorne, that AYSO Region Twenty-One is one of the most involved, uh, AYSO regions, uh, in the area. So, we have our Hawthorne history, especially, uh, with one of our, uh, one of our own that has gone on to the LA Galaxy and, uh, one of the other MSL, uh, Major League Soccer teams, uh, uh, Mr. Gardis. So, uh, we're really proud of him, and we're very proud of our Hawthorne history, uh, in soccer. So, this, uh, this is a good thing. Um, of course, we as the city council will be talking about some of the logistics of this and see the feasibility. Um, but, uh, I really appreciate you guys, uh, coming to us like this. Um, so, so that's, I just wanted to add that to the whole mix, right? Right?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm sorry, to the mayor, mayor. I'm not finished. I want to go ahead and let Councilmember Patterson
Yeah, yeah.
speak too. But, uh, go ahead.
Well, I appreciate it. Actually, you know, I just had some questions myself. I mean, I, obviously, I love the, um, the, the opportunity to have a professional team, uh, spending time in our city and spending money in our city and attracting commerce to our city. Uh, but I was curious, I was looking at the proposal, it talked about, are you guys looking to have the ability to acquire rights to conduct commercial activity? Would that generate sales tax for the city of Hawthorne if you guys were conducting commercial activity, selling merchandise?
Definitely. Yeah, no, absolutely. I mean, there's a number of ways that we can directly bring revenue to the city, selling merchandise, doing camps and clinics on our own, even in partnership with the city. Um, and then there's revenue, as Angela was talking about, as far as, um, having to house our players, having to house the competing players. The other thing that's really interesting, what's really exciting about Los Angeles, when you look at the World Cup coming in a couple of years, hopefully, um, and the Olympics, there aren't that many professionally, like, high-grade facilities in, you know, the LA proper for these teams to practice. There's actually an incredible void. So, we actually have the opportunity to then, when those opportunities come, to lease out our facilities and drive additional revenue when other countries or other teams come into, um, to, into the, um, into the city. Um, it's a model that UCLA follows very well, Barcelona, and, and, you know, when teams come in, they, you know, they charge a thousand dollars a day. Plus, it's kind of an incredible revenue stream, um, that is all a bonus because they have the facilities and because it's geographically desirable. And we feel like with the proximity of this pitch in Hawthorne to both the Bank of California, as well as SoFi Stadium and the, um, the Galaxy, um, Dig the Health Park, we think we'd actually be a destination for these teams to want to come and rent our facilities and rent our fields and bring additional revenue, um, to the city.
That's awesome. And then I just want to make sure I heard, heard you right. You said that you guys would, wherever you guys call it home, yeah, you would expect to make an investment of about a quarter million dollars into that community?
At least. So, I mean,
That's outside of the
Yeah, outside of the actual pitches and all that we're talking about. On top of this entire project, ten percent of all of our revenue off the top line goes back in the community. We'd really love to be able to connect to that community long-term, especially if it's where our players will be and where we will be spending time and getting to see, you know, our academy grow, hopefully, at some point. Um, so, we would love to make an investment, and this is something that would be recurring, but of, of at least a quarter million dollars going into different programs throughout the community.
Yeah, I, I don't know if you can expand on that, like, what type of, you know, where you would look to invest it? Would you be looking to donate to nonprofits, to holding events in the city, to, you know, I don't know, help repair some of the parks? Like, what would be the things that you would be?
Um, yeah, and I can, Catherine can speak to a lot of that as well, but, I mean, some of the stuff that we'd already brainstormed, I, we brought a bunch of it out, uh, in the proposal, but even things along the lines of, like, building a sidewalk along Dodie to make it a little safer, uh, so people could walk along that and get to the facility, uh, whether that means beautifying some of the parks or helping with, you know, different infrastructure projects. I mean, we're here to partner with you guys and to see what you need as a community, what the families in Hawthorne need. If that means, you know, a camp or an event or a SAT tutoring class, great. If that means one year, you know, it means we need to fill out the potholes or have some extra safety for something, anything like that, I think we're open. Um, Catherine, are there anything that you would want to particularly highlight, maybe?
Yeah, I would just say that, that our approach to this kind of partnership is really holistic. You know, we are a sports team, but there's so much that goes into making sports accessible. Um, and, you know, increasing equity in general, right? And so, it really is to Carrie's point about listening. That's been our approach at, at every step, is to, to be a part of the community, to listen to what the community actually needs and to develop our programming around that. So, it, the way we see it is really that we would craft all of this in partnership with you.
That's exciting, that's exciting. And I understand that you mentioned somewhere in your proposal that you guys have existing relationship with Costco and may be able to leverage that relationship to provide some parking opportunities?
Exactly. So, we, I know that one thing that we had talked to Vaughn about, and he was super helpful, I, kind of highlighting was some concerns about maybe losing some of that parking. I mean, we wanted to kind of address that head-on. Um, I actually can see here, I, we had a couple of different things. We talked to Gensler, who, uh, is our, that we've been working with, to figure out a couple of places to actually kind of reassess, uh, on the current land. So, if that meant, you know, moving the exercise facility onto the park, um, and making sure, obviously not taking anything away, and then expanding and reassessing some of the parking here. Or, if you look at the next one, um, maybe building out parking here as well. And then if that were not an option, that we are more than happy to talk to Costco, who we, again, have talked to at a corporate level before, and have, they also have a huge nonprofit arm in saying, hey, we want to make sure we're shuttling people in, we want to make sure that there's parking accessible, if we need to rent out, you know, a certain number of spots for whatever, it's an event or if it's on a daily basis. Um, we're open to, to trying to figure that out and, and making sure that everyone has that, you know, impeccable experience at the park as well as access to it.
We also show, um, the other thing that we thought about too is, you know, we understand that some of the parking stops, spots drive revenue. Um, so in addition, trying to add some additional parking here, but we also went, um, we had, we had one of our team members do some research of just other parks, um, you know, near Hawthorne, and what they charge for their fields, right? And so we
This would be the field that you guys would make for us?
Yeah, so this is the field that you guys would get all the revenue from. Everything would go back to Hawthorne. Um, and so this is just, these are just fields that are, yeah, one field that you rent, and they, it's on average, they do a couple hours on a weekday, and then ten hours on the weekends. Um, and on average, that was around twenty-five grand in revenue, knowing that you could either scale up or down depending on how many games and, and events you wanted to have there. Um, but we wanted to, uh, obviously, address some of the, the revenue would be lost if you were to have some of that parking go away.
That's really exciting. So you're saying that, that, that's the average usage in these other parks?
Other parks, yeah.
And, and with that, their average rate, that could potentially mean of twenty-five thousand per month to the city of Hawthorne.
Yeah, I mean, based on, based on the research we did, the range is fifteen thousand to thirty-five thousand. So, it really just depends upon, you know, how often you want to have those, um, have that field used in the evenings or on the weekends. If you bring in AYSO or other club teams or tournaments, um, there's a lot of opportunity, again, that you get to gen- generate revenue. And that's something that we can work with you to manage, or we can find an operational group to come in and manage it. Um, it just depends how much heavy lifting, um, there is and how much you want to do yourself, but we can support that in any way, so.
That's really exciting. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Mayor, um, Vaughn wanted, I, I wanted Vaughn to speak on what they were just talking about, the parking. I know he was the community developer or community liaison, what do you call it?
Community Services.
Community Services Director, I'm sorry.
No problem.
But if anybody would know, the use of the facility would be Vaughn. So, if you could, please.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, very happy to have Angel City here. Uh, it's been a pleasure, uh, speaking to you guys on several occasions. I think this is a great project, uh, very beneficial to the city. Uh, regarding the parking, uh, we will lose some parking, but I think with a strategic plan, using our resources that we have locally, if that's from shuttling to special events, uh, having a partnership with, uh, Costco, uh, revamping our parking lot to, uh, create additional parking spaces, I think, would think with great planning and uh, sitting at a round table, discuss these issues, I think that we can meet the expectations of the community with parking.
Thank you.
Um, so we're gonna, I'm gonna move on to Mayor Protem and Councilmember Montero.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, so thank you for your presentation. This is a very exciting project. I do have some questions, um, and, and they do, um, relate, some of them relate to parking. I have some other questions too, but some of them relate to parking. Um, so, how would you draw the distinction between parking for the residents who attend community events at the Memorial Center? Because this Memorial Center is the center of the cultural life in Hawthorne. And it's, it's, you're going to be fundamentally changing it because it's now be, going to become a sports center, basically, the, the center of, 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 of sporting events in Hawthorne. It will no longer be the center of cultural life in Hawthorne, which it has been throughout our history. So, to me, um, since it is changing the character of Hawthorne, the Hawthorne Memorial Center, we have to take a special look at it to make sure the city is going to get the value out of this facility that would warrant the loss to the community of its cultural center. So, my question, my first question is, how will the distinction be drawn between parking for the residents who attend community events at the Memorial Center and parking for the sports events? So, you're talking about seventy-five parking spots. How will that be distinguished? How, you know, for example, let's say there's a big event in Hawthorne and, and the, 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 uh, we need the parking for, for this special event. How would the parking, how would the parking be distinguished between the parking you would need for your facility, for your, for your, um, you know, for your players, and for your, your, your executives and whoever, and the, and the parking the community would need for its events? How would that distinction be made?
Thank you for, uh, for the question, Mayor Protem. Uh, it's a great question. It's something we've also considered. Um, it's kind of hard to see on here, but I can, can try and zoom in, or you can look at it on your, on your docs as well. But we have a site that, uh, is kind of, uh, designed just for Angel City parking as of then. At that point in time, um, when we're using the facility, that's what we would try to keep our staff and everything kind of locked in there. Um, with that being said, we are more than happy to open it up, um, and share that. Uh, the other thing that I was gonna just mention is that regardless of, of, uh, you know, events that are happening for, on the field, the programming is really coming through as a partnership with you guys. So if you guys are saying, hey, we need, you know, all this space for an event, um, you will have access to that calendar. We're not trying to plan around that, like, on top of that. Uh, and there's obviously so many other great businesses around you guys that we would love to work with, whether shuttle people in or making sure that there are other lots that maybe we can drive revenue and rent out as well.
Yeah, and let me add a couple of things. Um, so in addition to opening up the, the parking area, which you can see above the ACFC Training Facility, um, what's also important to note is the usage of the pitch by the first team. So, um, typically, they're gonna practice in the morning, and Angela can speak to this. So, we're talking about, they'll be there from more like six AM, maybe till, majority of the team will be there, maybe till eleven o'clock. The coaches will be there till three. After that, the usage, you know, there's really no usage from the first team at all, which means all of that parking is available for anybody within the community. Second to that, um, we will be gone most weekends. We'll either be playing home games or be away. If we're away, it's usually a three-day travel. So, my point is that on the weekends, when you might have more events, or you might be having events with more people, the, again, the capacity will be there because we won't be there. Um, we'll either be playing or it'll be a rest day. So, in the, so, we will not, we, we will not have the usage in the evenings during the week, and we will not really have much usage on the weekends. Um, it's really, you know, morning till midday where the usage would be the greatest, and, and it's really capped around thirty, forty people. Um, it's not, it's not that excessive. Um, the second part I would address, uh, is what you said at the beginning, Mayor Protem, which is the fact that, you know, it's a cultural center. And I think it's really exciting that a culture center is inclusive of the city's arts and entertainment. And sports is becoming a really big part of how community comes together and how people engage. Um, and what, I feel like you can think about it as adding another piece to the community and expanding your cultural um, experience to those that want to have a sports experience as well. Um, you know, obviously, we found that it is a way to bring people together, um, of all different ages. And, um, I think it's something just additional that you'll be able to offer your community, um, in addition to arts and entertainment that you do so wonderfully today.
Um, so, but I guess, okay, so what about, so what about the, the, the parking? So, you're, what you're saying is there's no usage at all from the first team in the, in the evening? Is that what you're saying? And what is the first team?
Sorry, so that's, I apologize. That's the coaching staff and the players. So, by two or three o'clock, they're all gone. Um, and so that, that, you know, that, that parking area that's above the ACFC Training Facility, you know, would be available and to be opened up for your usage.
All right, but then a lot of events are, begin in the morning as, and, and last until the afternoon. So, all, all the, a, a lot of the events are not just evening events.
Right.
A lot of the events begin in the morning.
Sure. I, yeah, I think the other thing to note is the parking area that's designated for the coaches and the players is all we would need. So, you're not gonna see Angel City bleed into any of the other parking spaces. Um, and there's also the opportunities, when you have events during the morning, we could obviously work with the team to have them shuttled to practice and not utilize it at all. I think the point is, we want to work with you on that, and so, well, we will work around your schedule so that if you need that parking area because you've got an event, then we'll find another way to get our team, um, to the facility.
So, your part, so your, you don't, you would not be using the parking along El Segundo?
No.
Nope.
So, you would still have two hundred and seventy spots, uh, approximately, not including the additional seventy-five we're looking to add. That would be open to residents all the time.
Okay, okay, my, okay, my next question was, um, your, 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 your proposal says you will increase business and revenue for businesses in the area. How is that? How will that happen?
Sure, you wanna, well, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I'm, I mean, as somebody who worked in Hawthorne for a couple of years, I, I know that even just having an office there meant that we ate there, we played sports there, we, I went to the batting cage. I, I think about a lot of the things that you're gonna do if you're spending a lot of your day there. You also start to have relationships with, you know, different restaurants, different businesses, you know, your favorite store that's nearby, your favorite coffee shop. So, even just on a personal level from Angel City and all of our owners and our players, uh, I think that there's already that revenue that would be coming in from us just, you know, patronizing everyone around. Um, and then in addition to, if we ever be doing programming, it would be introducing new people to different local businesses there, and we would also, I mean, Catherine, if you'd love to speak on the, kind of like the Friday Five, or some of how we kind of highlighted some of the local businesses we worked with in the past, I think it would be really interesting.
Absolutely. So, one of the things that we have really taken to heart is the, the need to support local businesses, um, in and around LA. And certainly, um, you know, being in an area, located in an area that, that is our home, um, we would take that opportunity to, to keep doing that work. And one of the things that we've done is every week, um, on our every week, um, on our main social channel, we do a feature called Friday Five, where we highlight five local businesses, give background on them, and basically introduce people and encourage people to to go to those businesses. Um, we've also started supporting that with our our community channel called ACFC Street, where we actually send our team out to those businesses or to those art experiences, museums, whatever they are, um, to experience them and show people what it's like to actually engage with them. So there's that. There's the highlighting, the shining spotlight, um, and introducing people to to businesses they might not have have known about. And then to Carrie's point also, um, you know, big, a big part of what we'd want to do here is support and augment community programming. Um, and, you know, anytime you're bringing community together, there's the opportunity to bring in local business. Um, that's what we would absolutely want to do is, you know, bring in local restaurants and other vendors, to support and be a part of these community events where we are really bringing people together.
Okay. Um, you said that um you would, you would, we would be looking at revenue of about, twenty-five thousand dollars a month or, uh, I believe. But that would depend on the hourly rate that we, that that the facility, how, in the way the facility is used. Our hourly, our, our hourly rate is twenty-five dollars an hour. So I think we would be looking at less than fifteen thousand dollars a month uh in that case. Am I not, am I correct about that?
So the hourly rates that we pulled were specifically for soccer fields and programming on soccer fields. So if 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 your hourly rate is comparable to, you know, clubs and and clinics and schools using a soccer pitch, then you would be correct. Uh, but this is specifically to renting out a field.
Particularly of the size and and capacity that we would hope to build.
But you, but 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 based on what you're saying, we're looking at about less than fifteen thousand dollars a month. Am I correct?
No, no, I mean, again, I I I, I don't know what your hourly rate is based on, but for renting out, a field the size that we're planning on building, um, we were able to, get a range between, you know, thirty-five dollars and eighty dollars per hour. Um, so yeah, it could be as low as fifteen, it could be as great as thirty-five thousand. Um, and uh there's an opportunity, I mean, obviously for, you know, you know, when there's a scarcity of a product, you have the ability to price it that's appropriate for your community.
But you can't pinpoint it any closer than that?
I don't know which one of these is the closest.
I mean, I think it depends on how much time you'd want to give up. And then obviously, we'd love to to hear Vaughn's thoughts at some point on on, what the fee should be and the fee structure, but we're happy if there was a number you were like, hey, we need to hit twenty grand a month. We're happy to try and help figure out how to make that work.
I I think what we need to, what I would do with staff is look at the the size of fields you're building and do a a fee structure study for, fields like this in the South Bay. And I'm sure our fees are under quoted due to we haven't amended them in many years. But uh looking at the fees here that you have structured here are about in the the range that other cities are charging for fields. So, uh, to answer your question, uh, Councilwoman Valentine, I think uh with a revisement of our fee schedules that we could, uh, possibly raise our fees from twenty-five dollars an hour to maybe fifty to sixty dollars an hour. But I would need to study to see what other cities are are charging for their rental of the fields.
And my last question is about your fifty-year lease. How would the city benefit financially from a fifty-year lease? That's an awfully long lease. And a lot of things can happen um during the course of fifty years. It's not, um, something that I I would typically be in favor of. So what would be the benefit to us of entering a fifty-year lease?
Yeah, no, it's a good question and totally fair. I think for us, it was more about cementing the long-term investment in the community if it, we're open to negotiating away from fifty, but for us, if we're gonna be building, you know, a, field and all of that, which will be an investment of fifteen million dollars or more, we would want it to be something that could be used for a long time. Um, and for the community to actually get, you know, the time to enjoy that and to have the upkeep for us to to take care of it. Um, and also, it's not an insignificant amount of of money uh to invest. And so for us, we would love for it to have, you know, multiple generations get to use it.
Thank you very much. I have no, no further questions.
Councilwoman Montero.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, uh, ladies, uh, Angels here, if we welcome to come in. Um, what I heard most, almost ninety-nine point nine percent are positive things that could benefit the city of Hawthorne. Um, I just want to, um, you know, key on that point about the revenue for the city, especially to rental the field, right? Uh, because in this proposal, you know, it was just a um, just saying that the revenue would generate, but when we got the agreement, so it will be a contract that that the city, would have the ownership to to be able to rent the field, right? And that all the proceed goes to the, to to us.
Correct.
Correct, right?
Yeah, so for the practice community team, I mean, we are happy to talk through a minimum guarantee, um, or whatever you guys would like, but you will have the first right to that field. Um, and all the revenue would be going back towards the city of Hawthorne, not um, not to Angel City.
And 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 thank, and and again, thank you also for addressing the parking issue because I think uh what I heard, uh, it satisfied my concern about the parking. Because when you said the the key there is, like you said, on the weekends, you guys are gonna be away most of the time. So you're not practicing on the weekend. So that that's the key there. Uh, because most of the community events sometime happens on Saturdays. So so that's the key thing. The other thing that you mentioned that I want us to maybe come up with a strategy, uh, when your staff and players are looking for housing, make sure they house themselves in Hawthorne, not west of the four or five or to the beach cities.
Yep.
Okay, because we want them to invest here in our city. And that's the way we're going to generate revenue, right? Is to bring more people uh with high incomes that's going to buy housing or or lease housing, um, and that is going to shop and dine in in Hawthorne, all right? So that's the thing that we need to keep in mind. Um, to make, to 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 make sure, because you see Hawthorne, you know, we we kind of like a low-income community, right? Uh, so so we want to build the middle class.
Yeah.
And and I, and I believe that with this program, you guys will help us us do that. Uh, you know, with great opportunities that that it's coming, that I'm listening, and I hope it will be fruitful for all of us. One of the things that, to look at the concept map that you guys created, right? You know how Hawthorne is a five-point-nine square mile and and we do not have per se enough, green space and parks. Uh, so when you put that proposed community field, right on our green grass there, it 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 kind of like give me a pause. Right? Because I don't want, I don't want us to delete the green space that we have that people can enjoy. I understand, you know, community fields, it's good for the youth and for the for the children, uh but we have to redesign a little bit better. Because we don't want to lose too many green space on that memorial park.
Yep.
All right?
Yeah.
Um, and 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 um, and I'm happy uh to see that you guys, you know, took the time uh to redesign the whole memorial park. Uh, and I think is going to give us a lift on that, Al Segundo Dory uh area. Um, because seventy percent of the people live in that, in that area, basically, of Hawthorne, right? Um, the other thing that I think that could help you guys, parking issue, for example, because we, I used to be on the school board, right? Um, and a lot of, uh, we have some uh high schools that do not have soccer field. And one of them is the Hawthorne Math and Science Academy. Uh, and then Hawthorne School District have a school called Comblum, right there, one block, uh, east of Dory, that have a lot of parking space. So if you guys could get an agreement with the Hawthorne School District to allow the Hawthorne Math and Science Academy to use your field, and then if you need more parking space, uh, maybe they accommodate special, if let's say, if as a weekend event or something, uh, it could be a possibility. Uh, so there is a lot of possibility that we could, we can make a great, great partnership uh with the city, with the schools, and with the community itself. Um, and um, and like I said, so try to look at that proposed community field, uh, maybe going towards the footsaw court, to blend them together.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, sorry to interrupt. I'm, I was actually curious how utilized the footsaw courts are, you know, the bocce and the ex, and the exercise, because our, when we, when we did the rendering, obviously not knowing, we wanted to keep everything that was there. But if you came back to us and said, look, this isn't used that much, we'd actually prefer something else like that. We can absolutely take that in consideration and work with you on the designs. We just, didn't want to subtract too much because we didn't know what the utilization was. But there is a lot of opportunity to add more green space, or to move the exercise area around, or even the bocce area around.
Yeah.
Um, one of the things you'll notice is that we added, um, you know, the picnic areas and we added, um, opportunities for, you know, families and friends to come and watch the games as well. And so we added um all of that.
Yeah, so so I'm going to uh defer uh for Vaughn because like I say, Vaughn was the Parks and Recs director. So he can tell you guys exactly how the footsaw uh courts and the bocce uh uh ball court. Uh, so he can tell you guys what to do because I think he have much better, better vision than I because he's been there, uh, and have created a lot of the programs in there. So I'll I'll defer to Vaughn to work with with your team, to come up uh with that green area of the memorial park. Because I'm I'm satisfied with the uh the field, the turf field and the training facility, and uh and the parking that how you have described. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, council member. Yeah, I need to, I wanted to say, um, council, Mayor Protem, do you have your hand up or is that it?
I just. Oh, no, I'll take my hand down.
Okay, go ahead. And I want to add something at the end.
Yeah, I just wanted, uh, just let everybody know what a uh great project this is. I know there are some concerns, uh, with regards to parking. I always say there's a will, there's a way. There's the, all the things that they made mention and including us, Vaughn and I, we've identified a parking structure that we look to work with. But I um want to thank Vaughn for providing the sheet sheet with regards to the type of usage. Uh, I'd like to thank everybody that ma- made, uh, had questions. Uh, I think uh where there's businesses to come to the city of Hawthorne, it's gonna be due to the fact that we have, a project such as this. And um, I want to just go ahead and make the motion. I make a motion. If I could get a second, there's a motion on the floor.
Well, I have, I actually asked for discussion. I just.
Yeah, I know, but there's a motion. If I could get a second on the floor.
I second.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay. No, um, what is, what is your motion gonna consist of? Because.
It's already, I I made a motion to approve the, to approve what we're seeing here today and bring it. And we have a second, so you could go ahead and make your.
Well, um, no, actually, what we need to know is, look, I think we're all in concurrence that we're interested in seeing what's going to be proposed. I think you already heard one of our council member colleagues uh that showed expressed a concern with the proposed community field. This is a plan. Um, I'm concerned about the proposed community field taking away green space. If you're forcing me to vote on this, I'm gonna vote no on it. Because I don't see, I don't like the aspect where we're losing the proposed community field. If you're asking us to, uh, if you could refine your uh, your motion to something that makes a bit more, uh, that, doesn't commit us to this plan, if, I would like, I would like to have.
We always could use discretion. We could always use discretion.
May I, may I, uh, I I would suggest, you know, uh, e- even if we vote, but it's to go back to the drawing board with our staff, uh, with Vaughn and the Parks and Recs uh uh director there, uh, and and the public works, uh, to to come up a solution not to lose too many greens.
Absolutely.
Okay, so to talk about how to, how to blend the proposed community field with the, with the uh uh, footsaw court and even with the basketball and all of that. And and talk about the bo- uh, bocce ball court, that maybe that's not the right location or.
And that's where I.
Exactly.
Take all two footsaw courts, shift the third one and and.
Why I said there's always discretion. There's always.
This is not a final map.
So if you're asking, so that that motion needs to be refined because I don't want to be forced into voting no based on what I see because I'm.
The council member Montero just made that uh recommendation.
Okay, well, let me just, let me just complete my thoughts here. Okay, because I did have, I just want to complete them. I like the way it's laid out with the natural turf field, the training facility. Everything's lit, has space there. The the parking is for the uh club members, the the team members and the coach, coaching staff. It's already there. It's already laid out. You just, you use the same gate that's there. So there's not too many changes. And it's just that, it's just that I can guarantee you, the biggest argument here in the city of Hawthorne has been that we don't have enough green space. I don't, I personally don't think we need a community field. I personally do not feel that we need it. I personally don't feel we need a bocce ball court anymore.
Yeah.
So, um, and I don't even really feel that we need to move, do anything with the footsaw courts. But if uh Angel uh City Football uh Club is willing to be good neighbors and help us redesign our current, uh, green space, that would probably be very, very welcome. Do you see what I'm saying? So I would still like to debate the layout of this thing, but if you want to just uh, go ahead and make, uh, proceed with the motion, I'd be willing to vote on that. But, I mean, I think there's just still opinions that we need to get and.
What is the motion?
It needs to be defined.
Yeah, we defined it. Councilmember Montero defined it.
What is, what is, what is the motion? Go ahead and define the motion.
All right, so, uh, what, what Ms. English have to uh make the motion, and I second, it is to, to conditionally go ahead with the project, accept the project. But with the condition that the map, the concept map is going to be looked at, with the Angel City staff and our city manager and public works, and the Parks and Recs, to come up with a better design of the green space, that has been proposed for community fields and the bocce ball court. Everything else is fine with me.
I would like to include some community feedback too as well, just to, on the renderings as well, so.
Yeah, but but so 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 that's the the whole that's thing because, you know, we know the footsaw court is very popular.
Can I call for a vote, please?
Okay, so that is what I'm saying.
And I agree.
We can go ahead with the project because I think the 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 Angel of, Angel City Football Club need, a decision so they can stop.
We should move forward with the understanding that we have to. Final understanding of the map.
Councilmembers, I have a motion. I have a second. Can I call for a vote?
Can I, can I get a, can can I get a clarification of exactly what the motion is on this?
The motion is to accept uh A- A- Angel City Football Club Training Facility in partnership with the city of Hawthorne, coming to the city of Hawthorne, with the recommendations that were made by Councilmember Montero and Councilmember Patterson, the mayor, uh, which would be refiguring the grounds to exclude the boc- bocce courts, which is hardly used, to possibly minimize the community field and provide more green space, and work collectively to assure uh that the program, the facility and our partnership uh is uh to full fruition.
And I would like to renegotiate the lease agreement.
Okay, but we're conditionally going ahead. Let's just go.
I have right now the motion on the floor, and I'm accepting what their agreement is, what their recommendations are. I have a second. So I just outlined everything, and that's to accept their proposal. I'm accepting their proposal. I have a second on the floor. I'm asking for a vote.
But let's hold, let's hold on. When we vote on this thing, I mean, look, I want to go ahead and support this. But when we're saying we're going to accept the proposal, there are certain things that we might want to add when it comes to community benefit.
And also, and also, I just want to say that I haven't seen the proposal. And there are are legal issues that needs to be passed. And so I I don't know exactly. When you say we're accepting the proposal, I have no idea what what proposal we're accepting.
Well, Attorney Robert Kim, we had a discussion today.
We did.
And we did have a discussion today. And I'm really surprised that you don't have the proposal because you and, and you and, uh, Mr. Vaughn have met with them and they provided you that information. They provided an email to everybody to include the proposal. And yes, there are some legal red- renovations. There's some legal matters, but that's neither here or there at this point. That's something. We're gonna have to negotiate that with them. You know that.
I, I'm just saying, I, nobody gave me a proposal.
Councilmember Patterson, then Councilmember Montero. Go ahead, Councilwoman Patterson.
How about just a directive to create an agreement for the council to.
Thank you, my gosh.
So that agreement will outline, right, the, the lease. You know, will, will work on the layout of the map. How about we just do a directive?
That's what we needed to hear, sir, thank you.
To have the city manager, city attorney, work with their staff to put together an agreement for the council to, to vote on.
The wording is very important when these resolutions, these, uh, motions are being made, because they can come back and say, well, you guys agreed this to, so, okay, that sounds good.
Right, and that agreement can be brought before the council first to vote.
Thank you.
And so between now and that time, we can figure out the field and maybe even have, you know, and, and at the time of. Voting, discuss the, the lease term at that time.
Thank you.
So what are we voting on tonight?
Oh my god. Just to move forward with the project and then for the, for the staff to come up with the, with the legal agreement. Between the, uh, Los Angeles City Football Club and the city of Hawthorne.
To negotiate every aspect that was.
Yes, you have to negotiate.
That's it.
Thank you, mayor.
Not final. And it sounds good. Roll call vote, please.
Okay, councilmember Montero.
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Valentine.
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and councilmembers voting yes.
Congratulations, Angel City Football Club.
This is good.
Thank you, Owen, thank you, Carrie, thank you, Angela, thank you, Julie. Uh, looking forward to moving forward and instructions have been made to our city, uh, attorney and city, um, manager. They look forward to. Calling you and working out everything. Thank you so much. And to the community, you've got a great program coming to you.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to kicking some, uh, goals into those nets over there.
If I'm the goalie, you'll, you'll score every time.
Yes. We've already scored, we've already scored. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Another batch of cookies, man.
I'm gonna bring some more cookies. I'm gonna bring you the whole dough man, I'm gonna bring everything.
We'll bring some merch too, we'll get some stuff out there.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure that anything we do, uh, for the community and with you guys is, you know, laid out, you know, pretty, pretty good and clear. And that we have a good positive experience, uh, with this whole thing, so I think we're headed there. Thank you.
We, we care about the exact same thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye bye, good night.
Okay.
It is a great project, man, come on.
Of course.
It's gonna give the city a new life.
A fifteen million dollar investment in the city of Hawthorne, this is a one lifetime opportunity, it's never gonna happen again, never.
Alright, I, I bet he's gonna put the Hawthorne even more on the map, uh, worldwide, because there is a lot of women's stock all around the world.
Um, I'm pretty sure that when the World Cup comes in, the, one of the, one or two of the teams from, uh, from one of these other countries is gonna use that site.
Yeah.
The Olympics, and let me just say to Mayor Pro Tem, if you think you have a business expo now, wait until these folks come in. You're gonna have a larger business expo because of the businesses they're driving and because of the sponsorships that they have.
Hope so, hope so. I hope it's worth that fifty year lease.
Alright, guys, um.
If the airport could get eighty and a hundred, I'm sure we could work with fifty.
Alright, guys, so, um, I have the next two items, um, I just wanna kinda go through them, and then we also have councilmembers, uh, reports. I really ask that the council member, maybe councilmembers may spend a minute or two on the council member reports. And then we have a two closed sessions. Alright, we're already at nine thirty PM, so I know last time we said, uh. We said, oh, keep your reports short for the elected official, and somehow that meant to some people, let's go twenty minutes per report, so.
Okay, let's go, Mr. Mayor, so now you're talking.
Now I'm talking, now I'm giving.
Can we, can we possibly postpone some of these events until the next time, because?
Can we pu- can we postpone my action items, uh, Mr. Vaughn Norris?
You can do them quickly, thirty seven.
This is very straightforward.
Yeah, do it quickly, come on, let's go.
Item thirty-three is a matter I brought forward. It's discussing the cannabis program and the selection of a working committee chair. As well as additional committees after working committee and clarif- clarification regarding the types of licenses. So the first thing that I ask my city council member colleagues is to think about the uses that we would like to license here in the city of Hawthorne. We can discuss that at a future meeting, okay?
That's the working committees will give us a, uh, a suggestion, okay?
No, but.
We cannot talk about type of licensing.
No, no, I think we can give a general direction as, you guys start thinking about it. You guys start thinking about it, we can discuss it at a, at a future meeting, on the new types of licenses. Okay, and, uh, that could include sale, cultivation, the delivery, or the fabrication of cannabis products.
Distribution also.
Oh.
Distribution.
I did, that's, I called. Delivery, which is distribution.
They call distribution, yeah.
Okay, distribution. I'm, I'm not so well versed in the cannabis world, so.
I am. I went to the workshop.
Alright, so now let's get straight to it. Uh, E-Gemma was, uh, selected as the consultant. So we're established that that's gonna be the group they're working on. And, straight up. I wanna give everybody on the council here an opportunity to participate in these ad hoc committees. And, we've identified, I've identified and, uh, I've talked to staff, and what are those three committees, uh, Mr. Vaughn? That were mentioned?
Okay, we have three committees. We have an oversight, working committee, licensing committee.
So the, the working committee is the first one, the licensing committee is the second one, and the third committee would be the oversight committee, correct?
That's correct. Robert, Mr. Kim, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to give everybody on the council, with the exception of myself, an opportunity to serve as a chair or co-chair on these committees. Okay, so, in order to get things started, I'm going to make a motion for. Councilwoman Angie Reyes English to begin the first aspect of this would be, which, which is the working committee. Do I have a second?
No, no, working committee, we've already approved and we passed the resolution on today.
No, but.
All the appointment of the chair, yes.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero.
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Valentine.
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
And councilmembers voting yes.
I missed, I missed that, who, who was selected? I, I didn't hear.
Councilwoman, uh, Reyes English.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mayor, real quick, um, the work, the, the, the working committee is to bring, uh, policy legislation, correct?
Correct.
That's, that's the one that basically gets everything started, yes.
Okay.
The zoning, everything.
Then the licensing aspect.
Already have.
But that's a separate ad hoc committee.
Right, got it, okay, thank you.
And, uh, and the oversight committee is the third committee, so you're serving on the first aspect of that three, okay?
Thank you.
To get things started, okay?
Yes.
We'll find a way of distributing my rest of my city council member colleagues on those two remaining committees, okay? Thank you, guys, I appreciate that, and, uh, uh, thank you for accepting. Item thirty-four is a matter that I wanna address about court enforcement issues. Um, I would like to put this on the agenda for the next discussion, but. I am, as you guys heard me last time, I'm kind of, uh, very critical of what's going on with our parking lots. I'm reiterating that I'm very disappointed with that, and, uh, we just. What I'm going to ask, since I really feel that this is not working with our code enforcement here at City Hall. I'm going to make the recommendation that they now fall under the direction of our police department.
Yeah, I disagree. I think that we should, uh, probably outsource and pick up some, maybe an additional firm to help support the code and, uh, code enforcement. To my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, we have maybe two or four individuals in code enforcement. And, um, having to oversee building code as well as trash and all that other stuff. I think they're probably just understaffed. Uh, it looks like we probably need to provide them some additional support. And I'll be honest with you, I'll be very frank, I think the police department should handle police. Stuff only. I, I'm not a fan of us putting more and more departments underneath the police department. They have IT. They have parking enforcement and they're, have their, their main job of being police officers. I want them to be able to be specialists. In being police officers and not having to manage other departments. So my, my, I would, I would say not put them there. And provide them some support.
I, I, I wanna respond to that, and I wanna let you know that I do agree with outsourcing the code enforcement operations at some point, very, very, very soon. But in the meantime, since I don't feel that they have a long-term, uh, oversight right here within the city hall. We only have an interim planning director, and we, you know, it's not working out that well. In the meantime, as I'm suggesting, they have some people who've been here for a while, like the, in the police department. That's what I'm saying, right now, while we look at those options that you're saying. Go ahead, councilmember English, and then Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, mayor. I actually was hoping that, um, the code enforcement officers would be under the umbrella of, uh, of, uh. Peter Wang's department. The reason I say that is because they all doing the same thing. So it doesn't make any sense, uh, with regards to the police, however, um, I understand what, what, you know. Ultimately, what that would maybe help with, but at the same time, I think it's a, a, a negative. Um, we have policing issues and then we've, you know, which are more urgent matters. And I can't say that, you know, billing issues are not of an urgency, however, I believe that code enforcement should fall under, um. What is?
Building and safety.
Building and safety, because they're already got inspectors and they're already doing the same thing. So if that, if you could take that into consideration, mayor, I think that would work best, but most importantly, yes, they are under, um.
Understaffed.
Understaffed, and we need additional staff, and we, we've all know that there's people that are retiring. Uh, left and right, at the end of this year, and we need to be able to recruit. And we need, um, to recruit quickly, not just that, uh, field, but other departments that need to, uh, get. You know, filled quickly. Again, we still have, uh, lack in phone calls being answered. A lack in emails being responded, and we need to get, um, all of those, um, you know, answered and, and addressed quickly. But if we could consider, um, the code enforcement officers, uh, to go under that department, I would prefer that best.
Okay, and go ahead, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, I mean, so you guys heard what my suggestion is. In the meantime, while we resort and reorganize that department in a sense, go ahead.
I, I think this requires some, some further thought, mayor. I'd like to see, um, I'm, I'm, I'm inclined to, to agree that. Uh, code enforcement should be under building and safety, but I don't know that building and safety, um. Has adequate staff to be able to supervise them. Part of the prob- I, first of all. I, I, I also agree that they need, they need, uh, more support, they need additional, uh, they need additional staff. But I'm not certain, I think that would have to be in consultation with Peter Wang as to whether or not he would be. Uh, able to supervise them considering the fact that he's already understaffed. So, I think it's a, it's a big issue and it, it needs more thought put into it. That's what I'm gonna say. Not make a decision tonight. I think we should, I think this requires, um, a meeting between. Building and safety, code enforcement, possibly the police department, maybe that's an, that's an area we can consider. I definitely do not want to see them outsourced. I think it's, I think that, that this is a, a, a key governmental function.
Oh, not replace them, outsource, but maybe like get a firm to help support them while we beef up that staff.
Yeah, I think if this is a key governmental function, I don't think they should be outsourced. I think they should, I think this should be something that the city handles in-house. I don't foresee them outsourced. But I, but I, but I, but I think this is also an important question that needs to be. To, that needs to, I, you know, that needs to be handled with, with, with a lot of thought and, and.
No, absolutely.
Get Vaughn involved and get building and safety and get the police and dis- and make a decision as to who should supervise them. But they definitely, definitely need to be, there needs to be, um, a modification in the way they're supervised.
And then, uh, I'm gonna move on to Councilmember Montero, but I'm gonna respond to the, uh, previous three comments. And this is a result of the, the lack of cleanliness in the parking lots. And we've all, we all, I don't think there's anybody on this council that disagrees with the fact that there is a problem with code enforcement. And it, I think we're trying to attribute that they lack supervision, and that's not true. They've had, they've already received direction from us. With regards to certain types of enforcement that we've asked them to do to ticket daily, and they're not doing. And you still drive to these parking lots and it's still dirty up the gizou, okay? Then we're talking about, uh, we're trying to give them an excuse, oh, they don't have enough people. But what about the people that we've already tasked with following through on ticketing these parking, uh, these parking lot owners? That's what the origin of this conversation is. Mayor, uh, Councilmember Montero. And let's just close this out, so we can discuss.
But let, let, let me saying that, you know, we, we cannot point fingers directly to the code enforcement staff. Because you need to understand, when you're talking about these parking lots, especially the supermarket. Even the, the owners, the supermarkets and the, and the chains, they go and clean out those parking lots at five o'clock in the morning and six o'clock in the morning sometimes. And then in two hours later, when they open, the people that goes to shop make the whole mess again. So you cannot just point fingers directly to the code enforcement, say they're not doing the job, because I think they are, but. Is the education about the people, uh, and I keep saying, that's what I try to do, that, that open house and, 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 you know, and, and. And to talk about people about cleaning Hawthorne, not just the street, but also the parking lot, because people is the ones making the mess. So this is what we need to educate, you know, from the young to the old. Please, be proud of your community, don't throw trash. Don't throw, don't leave your, your, your garbage behind. They go, they go to the, to the Chinese plate, they go to the McDonald's, they go to the. Poli loco, they throw, they, they eat, they throw the trash. That's the problem that we have. Now, one of the solution here, yes, we need to give them help, because they're shorthanded there. Uh, and we need to maybe is to revamp the job description to be clear what type of job they needs to be done. On the code enforcement. Third, uh, remember that we supposed to hire. An administrator that's going to restructuring the planning and the building and safety. When we hired that person, that person should be the, the, the supervisor for the code enforcement. Because you've got issues, not just the building and safety, but you've got the planning. Sometimes, you've got the building and safety, you have this set of, of enforcement. So, so you have, when you, when we have that person out there, that's going to unite those, those departments together. Planning, building and safety, and then code enforcement. And, and that with a job description clear for the code enforcement, so then we don't have no this misunderstanding what their jobs are. Because they are there doing their best they can. And like I said, sometimes it's not the code enforcement, even sometimes it's not the operator. Of the supermarkets and the parking lot, but it's the people. And I'm sorry there, I live in this city, I drive in the city twenty-four seven. I shop at Ralph, I shop at Ninety-Ninth and So, I see what people do. So that's what I'm saying, that we can restructuring the department after we got the, the new administrator. That is going to unite those department upstairs and make it efficient and clear. A determination what job each department should be doing. That's my recommendation.
Okay, um, everybody's given some feedback, so we all have a, a group of feedback here. Um, I'll schedule another action discussion item, maybe at the next meeting or the following meeting, okay? Just so we can move forward. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Alright, so we all have different opinions, but we all kind of agree that there's an issue here, and Hawthorne, uh, deserves to be beauty, beautiful.
Yes, and it's that with the people.
Well, of course, obviously, but, you know. Okay, so, uh, I'm going to start off with, uh, my, uh, well, I'm going to ask that you guys try to give a, a minute report. Oh, I'm so sorry, that's an important one, isn't it? I am so sorry. Go ahead, councilmember.
Alright, so you got over the item thirty-five, is to look at the, uh, date that's coming up for our meetings, right? We got one on October twenty-sixth, November nine, and then November twenty-third is two days before Thanksgiving. And in the past, we have canceled that meeting. Okay, so we have to make, take an action to do that. Then we got December fourteen, and then December twenty-eighth, alright? So, we could prob- potentially cancel the twenty-third, November twenty-third meeting and December twenty-eighth, so we don't have meeting.
I concur.
Okay?
Does everybody concur?
Yes, I agree.
Patterson? Councilmember Patterson?
I would agree, yes, of course.
Okay, yeah, I don't know, man, I thought you were holding out, brother. Alright.
Alright, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. If we could have a minute report from everybody. Thank you. If we could have a minute report from everybody so we can go into closed session. Let's try to aim for a minute. Uh City Treasurer Fallon?
Hey, everyone, good evening. Uh keep it nice, short and sweet. Uh. There was a a nice event where there was pizza with a police officer in my neighborhood. Uh unfortunately, I couldn't make it because I had other plans, but I just thought it was great, uh getting kids in contact with police officers. Uh and uh that's pretty much it, I'll keep it really short. Uh thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. City Clerk, Jimenez?
All right, I'll keep it under a minute. Uh just, first of all, I just wanna thank everyone watching from home. Um we were able to provide food to over four, three hundred families at our food drive this Saturday, so I just wanna thank our volunteers. Uh and the American Heart Association who provided the produce and the food. Also wanna thank Public Works for helping us with the trash bins and a special thanks to the Hawthorne Math and Science Academy Key Club. Uh who volunteered on Friday after school to package the food. Um our next food giveaway will take place on October twenty-third at ten AM. And then the last thing is, as usual, uh please get vaccinated because it can not only save your life, but also those around you. So go to vaccinateLACounty.com. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman English?
Thank you, mayor. Um I just wanted to ask the chief of police if he could provide us some updates, I don't know if he's gonna do this um. Through emails or, but I know the community have inquired with regards to the rocket incident of the the club, the bar. On Hawthorne Boulevard at the Rocket, there was someone that was killed there. Uh curious to know, you know, um the details there. Um cattle are converters, there's a lot of them being stolen in our community. Um I know that the chief is aware of that, but I, the community would like to know how they're addressing that. And also there's what they call porch pirates, folks that are stealing packages. Off of the the front porches and homes, front doors of homes. Um this is something that is um an uptick. And uh chief, would we could get some kind of report out on these three items, I would appreciate that. I wanna thank the Hawthorne Police Department and uh Detective Vincent for the CPR training. That I attended along with um other folks in the community, it was a good round, uh I've been thanked twelve people or so. Um by myself and Mayor Proton attended, by the way, I'll let her talk on that, but that was a great training and thank you for that. Uh I want to direct uh city attorney, city manager. Uh October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, uh we didn't uh add that at the beginning of the month, so please put it on for our next council meeting. Um want to thank New Star Justice Center for giving us an update on the center and also um. You know, um recognizing domestic violence. Uh and 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 how that's i- is very important um. To provide not just services, but uh homes for the safety of those that are experiencing both men and women. Uh domestic violence. Um I'm gonna be doing my Operation Gobble. Operation Gobble uh turkey giveaway, everybody knows, uh Operation Gobble is an annual event. And I'm gonna be reaching out to a number of water agencies and folks uh through partnerships here with our city, so be ready. Because this year we wanna give out more than five hundred turkeys. And mayor, I want you to be able to participate in that, we usually do it here in front of city hall. But uh councilmember Montero and myself last year. Uh met up at a school district, at a school, a local school, and were able to provide turkeys and certificates, coupons. Uh but I look forward to partnering with everybody. Um can uh Councilman Patterson also help with that too. Um wanna thank um. Uh twenty thousand to clean, I can't, oh, I'm sorry, I was just. I wanna thank um everybody today with regards to Angel City Football Club, I can't speak enough on. How it's gonna change the dynamics here in the city of Hawthorne, how this is a game changer for many in sports and entertainment. We too are now recognized as a city that provides um a facility, a training facility for the first. Uh First Women Soccer League Club here in the city of Los Angeles, but moreover in the city of Hawthorne, that's where they're gonna be at. And uh what the benefits that's gonna come from that program, I can't say enough, and thank you all for your support. Um I like the fact that we're addressing our dumping, thank you Public Works Department. Thank you of Republic Services and Staff, uh Vaughn, and I also want to thank um. Our staff, we still uh need a report back, uh Vaughn, if you will, uh with regards to. The customer service uh training that I had asked for, for all staff to be trained through customer service with Jan Vocals. Uh one source group, and I also want to um make sure that we have the. Correct language for the resolution with regards to the Boys and Girls Club for the city uh partnerships with them here with our city and. Um. I also wanna make sure that uh the signage for no dumping goes up to alley in alleys that we have heavy dumping. Uh and make sure that we find them to the maximum to include our um. Our municipal code on that signage, so we could assure that uh folks understand. Uh the law that they just broke and what law that we have in our books that reads exactly verbatim what that says. Other than that, that should do it. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Uh Councilmember Montero?
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um again, thank you to the staff for the the reports that they submit to us, uh thank you to the public for participating. And just to keep notice that um to one of the callers that, yes, we are trying to work to take the homeless off the street. So it takes, uh it's not just one or two individual, but we, it takes a village to make sure that uh. We have to treat these people uh with kindness and try to figure out what we're gonna do with them, so. Um and I wanna congratulate the staff, Vaughn, and the Parks and Recs for. Also secure uh a little bit more funding from the South Bay Coq to to deal with the homeless issue, so thank you for that. Um. I would like to say thank you to Ms. English and Councilman David Patterson for bringing the Angel City to Hawthorne. Because like I said, this is gonna be their home, so it's it's a big project. And uh Hawthorne have, we have to move forward, we have to look into uh pers- you know, what's coming. And what can bring prosperity for the city of Hawthorne, especially for our. Uh you know, low income and diverse community that we have in the city of Hawthorne, so thank you for that. Um I wanted also to say, uh uh thank you for the chief, uh Ishi. Uh for sending us those uh emails on the weekend, uh it was a very busy weekend with all the. Uh accidents that happening in our streets, so thank you for keep us informed. And I want to congratulate again the chief and ask everybody, please read the newsletter from the Hawthorne Police Department. It's a great resource to show what our Hawthorne PD has been doing out there in the community. And it have some crime statistics and you know, and you will see how. Um the chief and the and the HPD, the whole department has been going out there. Outreach and educate folks on on different issues, so please, please, please uh read those newsletters. Because I think it's a tremendous asset for our community. Um. I would like to give a directive, again, is about traffic. Uh to Alan Long and and Vaughn, if you, if on the next meeting. Uh we can put uh on the agenda to create a four-way stop. On a hundred forty-first street and Washington Street. There is a two-way stop already, but the the neighborhood wants a four-way stop because cars have been flying on that intersection. So please, uh if we can put a four-way stop on the a hundred forty-first and Washington Street. Definitely on the next uh agenda, I appreciate it. Um again, great meeting. Uh and that's what people have to understand, we have to deal issue about reading a number, about housing. We dealing about, you know, create opportunity for our city, create opportunity, how how we going to deal with the homeless. Um and how to bring business to Hawthorne, so great meeting, Mr. Mayor, thank you to all my council members, thank you, have a good night.
I agree. Councilmember Patterson, have you done?
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. One of first things, the community for tuning in, for calling in. Always appreciate hearing from the community, what's important to you. Uh wanna thank staff, uh I know you guys got a lot of hard work to do, and I know we give you guys a million directives. Um. Speaking of that, right, I had a constituent. Reach out to me about a parking they got, or I think a family member received from parking outside of those. Those T markings on the street. I brought up a good point that there should be some type of signage. Explicitly says that um you know, th- that's required and you know, subject to some type of penalty violation, so. This is city manager, if you can look into feasibility of being able to uh provide some kind of notice to the community, whether it be a sign. Or whether there be some type of correspondence as we start putting those those Ts out around the city that, hey, this is. This is what's expected of you and there's gonna be some type of fine if you don't. Um you know, act accordingly, so that was, it's kind of new and on certain streets. Um. Let's see. I would like to put a discussion item on the agenda. Uh to discuss the idea of having a deputy city treasurer here in the city of Hawthorne. Um the city treasurer made a a good point of somebody, you know, should have some type of. Discretion to make certain investments and I think it should be a staff member, I think it should be somebody with some subject matter expertise. Um and probably the best option would be a deputy, a deputy city treasurer. And I'm very biased on this subject, right, that's actually my job for the city of Carson. Um.
That's ready to discuss.
Let's see, let's see, let's see. One thing that I would like the treasurer to consider is a um. An investment oversight committee, some cities choose to have that. Uh to help kind of make some decisions, to have some accountability, have some public, some input from some other. Whether it be the public, some other expertise or departments in how investments go, so it's something that, something to consider. Uh I wanted to bring some attention to the Community Cleanup Day on November thirteenth, I'm gonna thank the city manager. For putting that together, when I first got elected, I had. Um asked the previous city manager, we can kind of do a whole Hawthorne cleanup. And because of the pandemic, that wasn't feasible at that time. Uh but the 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 interim city manager has uh. Put together a great event for the thirteenth for, to put out uh large dumpsters around the city. For people can drop off bulk trash. Um you know, furniture, whatever, wherever that stuff is, whatever they have to throw away. Organize uh staff and and volunteers at the Betty Ainsworth Center and kind of dispersed up the city and do a whole cleanup day. And so we definitely encourage the community come out and participate. Um you know, this is consistent with what I think all the council members have said of. We know, we need to make sure that we we work together and keep Hawthorne clean, I know the city clerk has done some cleanup outings as well, so. I'm looking forward to this being just a, you know, a really big um. Orchestrated kind of outreach to uh to clean up the city. And uh that's all, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Proton?
Thank you, mayor. As you may be aware, Senate Bill Nine and Senate Bill Ten have been signed into law. These were bills and are now laws that will erode the ability of local governments to control zoning in their own cities. On Thursday evening, the Holly Park Homeowners Association hosted Mayor Bill Brand of Redondo Beach. To speak on his initiative, which is ACA seven, a constitutional amendment to make zoning and land use locally controlled. He is beginning this grassroots effort to build awareness for the initiative. And will need to collect one point three million signatures to be sure that one million will qualify. I have invited him to come to this council meeting on October twenty-eighth to address this issue. And how the proposed legislation, if it passes, will reverse the Sacramento attack on local control. If you wish to get more information, and I'm speaking to the public, go to the website at stopsacramento dot dot org. Everyone needs to get involved in this to help our cities maintain local control. On October seventh, I had the pleasure of attending a CPR course given by the HPD. I learned how vital it is to attend to injuries involving breathing, choking, or bleeding. As quickly as possible, action needs to be taken. And it's amazing how fast your condition can deteriorate in just one or two minutes. It's frightening, actually, when you listen. To um what happens to your body if you don't get sufficient air. Or if you bleed out, it's it's, and how fast it happens, it's frightening. Thanks to our talented and experienced officers, Dr. Joe Nakagawa, Michael Murray. Vince Arias and Brandon R. Thank you all, and thank you Chief Ishi. For making them available for this very valuable training. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you, uh couns- uh Mayor Proton, Councilwoman, thank you. All right, so uh. Try to keep this under a minute, so I'm really happy about the Angel City Football uh Club. Uh we're going to definitely uh work with them to try to make this a win-win situation. For all the stakeholders, the club, um the city, the residents, and uh. You know, for everybody, I think this is great, and like I said, Hawthorne is the center of soccer and it has a lot of soccer history, even Pelé used to be. Uh honorary director of AYSO and he used to come to Hawthorne to the headquarters that we used to have here. Um so that's really exciting, right, to see them coming in, so let's give them our full support. And let's look over the plans and let's try to make a, choose something that works, so let's, round of applause one more time. You guys are all muted, we can't hear you clapping, man, what's wrong with you guys? I'm mute. Actually, yeah, that's pretty, that's pretty cool, huh?
I mean, we got the Lakers and El Segundo, we've got the Kings, is it the Kings?
It's gonna be super cool, yeah, it's gonna be super cool. All right, um. So the the next thing I wanted to talk is about some points of cleanliness that we uh that we have, all right, so. I would like to, if uh Mr. City Attorney, if we could, you could put an agenda, a discussion item. I I wanna talk about discussion items, okay, I don't wanna give you guys directives, and I think you have too many. Um but I think we need to talk about that too, because you guys get a lot, but, okay. So um. The uh talking about the entrances and exits on the freeways that come into and out of Hawthorne. Okay, we need to talk about what's going on there, you know, we have a lot of uh, there's a lot of ju- uh garbage that gets piled up right there. And um it's Caltrans responsibility because they're the ones that owns that, so I wanna discuss that with my council members on what we do with that.
Can I make a comment on that, mayor?
Uh super quick, just so we can move on, go ahead.
We have an ambassador, all of the, all of the, uh I mean, the the the, uh Caltrans. Divided the uh their their territory into ambassadorship, so we have an ambassador. That that was assigned to us, and I have not heard anything from him, and I don't know if if Vaughn has. But he's the one we should go to, to to make any kind of arrangements with Caltrans.
So I I I appreciate your comment, and thereby lies the problem, because they haven't even identified them and not made themselves available, so that's why.
Well, we 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 know who it is, we just haven't heard.
Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, miss.
Uh i- in the city of LA, we've got a government liaison that we speak to with go- to Caltrans. So there's a government liaison, there's not an ambassador, just like DWP has a government liaison. Just like these big corporations have liaisons, government liaisons. Um you could contact them at Caltrans and ask to speak with them, and then there's a um like a. Someone that they have assigned for uh trous- try uh, they have, what do you call, um not grid, but they have uh. I can't remember what they're called, but they're in districts.
Okay.
We need to know what district we're in, so we could get someone to address all these uh. The uh you know, all the debris, flying debris, all that other stuff, but I understand what you're saying, but you're, it needs to be a government liaison.
Let's bring all these ideas back at the discussion item, but I appreciate you guys, I know you guys know what I'm talking about, that's why everybody's putting in their like, you know, comments right here already. So if you could just put an item on discussing the entrances and exits on the freeways cleanliness. Then the other action discussion item would be uh using uh people who are receiving fines from the city as an alternative. To maybe having cleanup crews from those people so they can pay off their uh their, what you call it, their.
Fines.
Fines. And those are the people that are gonna go and, I hate to say, the code enforcement. I know, but I'm really disappointed with how these parking lots are, so if we can. We can bring up a discussion action item on using people who can uh pay their fines in, do this, do this manner, okay?
Community service.
Community service, yes.
Clean up.
Yeah.
If they have fines, the way to pay it off, you could clean the the city up.
Yeah.
Like, for real?
That's what they do right now on the on the freeways.
Yeah.
Exactly, but what about us?
Do that, yeah.
What about us, we could do that, something like that, okay, as an alternative. So let's just talk about it, let's, I just wanna put it on there, okay? Thank you, guys, that's it for me, thank you all the residents for watching, and uh we've, we had a great meeting today, this ten fif- ten-ten. So we have two closed action items and uh just love to go back.
Can we defer those until next time? Those are going to be, require quite a lot of discussion, you can't do those in five minutes.
Or maybe you do a special meeting? Or maybe you do a special meeting?
Uh, yeah, you cannot do special meeting for a closed session.
Actually, you're not on this stuff. You can't.
We're already here. I mean, we're already here.
Let's just do it, guys.
Let's just do it real quick.
Let's just do it. Let's just go straight in. If you have, uh, let's just get straight uh into it.
Okay, I need two minutes.
Two minutes? All right, I'm, I'm, the clock starts right now, okay? I don't know what you gotta do, but, uh, be in two minutes.
You want me to be descriptive?
Is the video still on? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Next, we have item number thirty six. Uh, oh no, okay, that was already completed. Items thirty seven and thirty eight are closed session. Uh, interim city attorney, please read both items into the record, please.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the first item is item number thirty seven. It's a closed session. It's public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven subsection B concerning the interim city attorney, Robert Kim. And item number thirty eight, which we will need to do separately, um, will be closed session for public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven subsection B concerning the interim city manager, Von Trane Norris.
Okay, um, interim city attorney, so we'll, we'll be doing both of these um in the back, and then whoever needs to be in the, appropriately be in the meeting uh will, one of you guys will exit and the other one will come in, et cetera, right? We'll make the necessary adjustments, right?
Yes, so uh Assistant City Attorney, um, Allison Stevens will step into number thirty seven and I will stay out. And I will step in on number thirty eight and, and Von Trane Norris will stay out, number thirty eight, to avoid any conflict of interest.
So we will now recess into closed session at ten eleven.
New York is the canary in the coal mine. What happens to New York is going to wind up happening in your city and in your community. We are going to fight every way we can to save every life that we can. We are all first responders. Your actions can either save or endanger a life. Job one has to be save lives. That has to be the priority.
You have to stay home.
Not just to protect yourself, but to protect others.
Stay at least six feet away from other people. Two, I'm playing. Just because you're at home doesn't mean that we can't be alone together.
Together.
Now dry.
Wash your hands for twenty seconds, just like Elmo.
How do you protect yourself and others from coronavirus?
Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, and your mouth.
Wash your hands often with soap and water for twenty plus seconds.
Clean and disinfect surfaces and objects.
Together, we can help slow the spread.
When you're interacting with others who are not members of your household in both public and private spaces, wear a cloth face covering. Before you put it on, wash your hands or sanitize them. Before you take it off, make sure your hands are clean. And after you take it off, wash your hands again. Wash your cloth face coverings often. Wear a clean one every single day. Learn more at publichealth.lacounty.gov.
Hello, I'm Gloria Gray, president of the West Basin Municipal Water District Board, where we take pride in delivering safe, reliable water to our communities.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality and reliability of the water supply. On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
Even though California is flourishing in many ways, we are also facing greater challenges than ever due to climate change. Cyclical droughts, intense fire seasons, and pollution endangers human health and the environment. In California, we're doing something about it.
Governor Jerry Brown today signed a bill regulating emissions from landfills to fight climate change.
The organics law calls on the state's forty million residents, its businesses, and every level of government to combat climate change by getting food, green waste, and other organics out of our landfills and get more good food to the one in eight Californians, including the one in five children who are food insecure. At twenty-three million tons, organics are by far the largest material type landfill in California each year. Fortunately, yard, food, and other organic waste can be recycled into compost and renewable natural gas. Thirteen eighty-three requires new rules and regulations to achieve a fifty percent reduction in organic waste disposal by twenty twenty, a seventy-five percent reduction by twenty twenty-five, and actions to make sure twenty percent of currently disposed edible food is redirected to Californians in need. Enforcement begins once the law takes effect on January first, twenty twenty-two. Achieving these targets demands a new approach and substantial new investments to restructure the waste management system of the world's fifth-largest economy. CalRecycle began rulemaking immediately after the law's passage in twenty sixteen. Jurisdictions should start planning now to meet the law's requirements.
Thirteen eighty-three will affect every resident and every business in the state of California. CalRecycle is here to help local governments understand and implement this new program.
Start planning now to connect large food waste generators with your local food recovery organizations to help feed hungry people where you live. Start planning now to expand organic waste collection to all homes and businesses in your area and increase your local capacity to recycle this material. Start planning now for rate changes to fund these efforts, new ordinances for mandatory recycling enforcement, and changes to existing franchise agreements for hauler permits.
Some of this is new, and some of it requires more of what you've already been doing, but all of it requires planning now to make sure programs are in place by January one, twenty twenty-two.
Recycling organic waste is an essential part of the state's strategy and one of the most cost-effective ways every Californian can reduce their own greenhouse gas footprint. Together, California will create a more sustainable future, combat climate change, feed more Californians, and improve the health of our people and our planet. CalRecycle is your committed partner in this effort. Get in touch with us to learn more about available support and resources to help you succeed. And talk to your staff about strategies for the next steps for thirteen eighty-three implementation.
Okay, with respect to the evaluation of Robert Kim as interim city attorney, the council voted unanimously to offer a permanent contract to Robert Kim for a term to be negotiated by the negotiator with Mr. Kim. And the council also unanimously voted to appoint David Patterson as the negotiator of the city attorney's contract.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, interim city attorney, Robert Kim, for right now, interim city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council met in a closed session on item number 38, and they have agreed unanimously to vote for a contract for city manager for Mr. Von Train Norris. And also unanimously voted to select councilwoman Angie English to be the negotiator for the contract.
Thank you, interim city attorney, and congratulations to you both.
Thank you.
Congratulations, yep.
Thank you.
The council took notice that you guys worked great together, and you've been pushing us through for the city. So is there anything further from council members or staff? If not, this meeting is adjourned at 10:45.
Yeah, good night, thank you.
Good night.